Okay, good morning. Aloha, kakahi, akakaku. This is the Hawaii County Council's 25th session here in Hilo. Today's date is November 3rd, 2015. The current time is 9:03 a.m. Please, if you could, turn off your cellphones or at least put it on the silent mode. This morning, we are privileged to have Pastor Bob Tominaga of Thy Word Ministries here to do our invocation. Aloha.
Aloha to the council members and to the staff and to the public who participated in today's meeting. I want to speak this blessing. Normally, well, I'll just say the word of God. Through faith, we understand that the world were framed by the word of God, that the things which are seen were not made, which things which do appear. So what is literally saying is that everything through word, if it is spirit, it is faith, it will produce. So what I'm saying is that it begins in a spiritual realm first, and then it'll operate in a natural realm. Because in John 6:63, Jesus said, "It is the Spirit that quickens it; the flesh profited nothing." But the words that are spoken to you, they are spirit and they are life. So I want to speak spirit, life to this meeting. And to understand this, people can come with water, tea leaves, salt. I don't, you know, come against that. But I come with the living word of God to bless. Because the word of God says that He has blessed us with all spiritual blessings in heavenly places. So let's bow our heart. Heavenly Father, we come to you. We thank you, Lord, that you have blessed this meeting. You have blessed the council members. You have given them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding beyond what they could even comprehend or think. Father, it is, Father, that it will produce results, Father. And, Father, we speak not only the blessing upon them, but to the staff members, the hard-working staff members, and to the public that is participating in this. Lord, we thank you that they will resolve this. And, Father, nothing is too hard for you, Father. No matter how big or how small, Lord, that they do have unity, they have your strength and your ability. Father, we praise you and we thank you that they will resolve anything and everything because they do have tremendous ability from you, in Jesus' name. Now, Father, I want to speak another thing to these council members and to the public. Dangi fever, Father, we want you to bless the Big Island of Hawaii. We eradicate it through the word of God. It is spirit, and we come against that, that it will be eradicated from the Big Island of Hawaii. Father, bless, bless, bless the Big Island, from the north to south, to east and west, in Jesus' name. Thank you. Amen.
Mahalo. Okay, next, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chung. Ms. David.
Here.
Ms. Eoff.
Here.
Oh, there she is. Mr. Iligan.
Present.
Ms. Rodishi.
Present.
Mr. Paleka.
Here.
Ms. Poindexter.
Here.
Ms. Willie.
Here.
Chair Kanuha.
Here.
Chair Kanuha, you have nine members present.
Thank you very much. And I also have a memo from Ms. Eoff. She will be in Kona today. She had some previously scheduled meetings and time constrictions that, that's why she needed to stay in Kona for this meeting. So just for the public's information and the rest of the council members. Okay, Mr. Paleka, do you think you could lead us in the Pledge of Delegance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mahalo, Mr. Paleka. Ms. Willie.
Yep. Before we begin, I just want to say that I don't have a problem with our combining these two meetings today, but I did have one item of mine scratched and removed.
In the council?
And from, well, this is from the committee, but it has to do with, you know, that we're having both meetings today. That if we're going to have both meetings, that doesn't mean that an agenda item that we have can just be eliminated and let's put it off till next time.
That wasn't the reason why that happened, Ms. Willie. I don't know.
So it's in the Finance Committee.
Maybe when we go into committees, we can bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have any certificates today, so I'm going to go into statements from the public on agenda items. I can bring up the first two testifiers here in Hilo, but I'm going to check with the rest of the sites afterwards. We have Kamale Hayes and Storm Steiger. Hopefully, I said that right. You can correct me when you come up and do your testimony, but I'm going to check with the outer site. You can come up and we'll get to you in a bit, but we'll check with Kona. Aloha, Kona. Is there anybody there wishing to testify?
Good morning, Chair. We do have two testifiers here in Kona.
Okay, thanks, Scott. We'll go to Waimea. Aloha, Waimea. Anybody there wishing to testify?
Aloha, Chair. We currently have one testifier for council.
Okay, thank you. North Kohala. Aloha, North Kohala.
Aloha, Chair. I have one testifier.
Okay, thank you. We will come back. Then we'll go to Pahoa. Aloha, Pahoa. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I have no testifiers here with me today.
Okay, thank you. And then we will go to Ka'ou Na'alahu. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair. We have no testifiers today.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start here in Hilo. I don't know if I, is Kamale Hayes? Yeah, please come. And for the public's information, you have three minutes to testify on each agenda item that you would like to testify on. Just state your name for the record, and you may begin when you're ready. I think you want to press your button to make sure the microphone's on.
Aloha, my name is Kamale Hayes. I am the school administrative assistant at Kikula'ona' Nauhahio' Kaniopu'u. And I'm here to, I guess, testify on our huihi paipai and pu'ohana nights at Nauhahio', which is our family night at Nauhahio'. So our school is a Hawaiian medium program. And we welcome our students as well as our families at the school. And so this is an opportunity for our families to learn the language and have resources at home to help their children with the Hawaiian language. So mahalo for having me here and letting me speak a little bit about that program.
Thank you very much. And I know we have the resolution later on, but maybe if the council members want to ask you questions when we bring it up, then we can bring you to the front.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Next, we have Storm Steiger. Make sure your microphone's on and bring it close to your mouth so we can hear you better.
Yeah, hi. Good morning, everyone. I'm in here in support of Resolution Number 314. And my name is Storm Steiger, and I'm president of the Puna Lions Club. And the Puna Lions are working with the Puna Island Lions Foundation to expand vision screening to the smallest of our keke. The camera that the Big Island Foundation has requested will allow the Puna Lions to reach out to the younger keke at preschool churches and community events, as well as expand our school age program to include the charter schools. And the Puna Lions will work with clinical health students from Pahoa and Ka'ao High Schools. This will allow the students to gain valuable experience in their field of interest. Last year, the East Hawaii Lions Club screened over 800 students in the Puna District. And with this camera, we hope to be able to screen even more keke. We are truly appreciative of the support of the county council and in particular are grateful to Mr. Iligan and Paleka for proposing this resolution. Thank you very much.
Mahalo for your testimony.
All right, thank you.
We'll go over to Kona. Aloha, Kona. You can introduce your two testifiers.
Okay, our first testifier today is Judy Fekete to comment on Resolution 26815.
Good morning. In Honalo and Honolulu and Kana'ihu lately, we've had several incidences regarding the homeless and the mentally disturbed persons. What we've experienced with the mentally disturbed and the homeless lately has been emailed, a lot of the background has been emailed to each one of the council members. Now, October 26th, we had a neighborhood watch where 40 to 50 people attended, business owners, concerned citizens, ministers, and congregation members. And Officer Scott Dewey gave us a slideshow. And after the meeting, many of us felt even more hopeless and depressed than before the meeting. We realized the police is stretched way too thin, and most importantly, there's more emergencies than ours, and it's really up to us to do something. Let the people know that they're not wanted, and please don't return to our places of business. It is agreed that we don't want to force them out of our town and just make it our neighboring town's problem, where we realize jail really is not the right place for people needing mental attention. And we're very sensitive about this issue and this resolution. My personal concern after reading the resolution is I have the impression that this resolution to reduce the number of the incarcerated will occur prior to any plan or program being in place to help deal with these mentally disturbed people. So I humbly request that a working plan and a program be in place before any release happens. So also, if you do have a plan, I think the community, many, many people in the community are really willing to help. We can't do it without you, and you certainly can't do it without us. So please keep us informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You ready? Our next testifier is Curtis Tyler to comment on Bill 91.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Hawaii County Council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide comment on Bill 91. I realize that it is coming, my testimony is coming at the second and final reading of this proposed change to the original ordinance. But I did want to comment that I am in favor of the extension. However, I am very concerned about Parcel 54, which is referred to beginning on page number four in Condition J and K and Condition L. And that refers to the approximately 2.8 acre parcel directly Makai or west of the subject property before you today. And it contains significant, so many significant cultural properties and sites that it cannot be developed because it was the site of the Queen Mother, Ke'opu' Orlanis' residence. She is the mother of Kamamea the second and Kamamea the third, as well as Princess Nahianena. And I'm a descendant of the people from this land, and I just want to be sure that the opportunity will be given for those of us who are connected to this land to work with Mr. Baker and/or his successors regarding protection of these properties. They have been significantly neglected and in some cases desecrated prior to the current ownership. And Mr. Baker has assured me that he wants to ensure that that doesn't happen again. And I just want to let the council know that since my involvement with this over 20 years ago, that I continue to be paying attention and look forward to working with Mr. Baker and his folks to make sure that everything is pono at this site. Thank you for your consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mahalo for your testimony. And when the matter does come up, we will be sure to ask any questions if there are any.
Mahalo.
Okay, now we will go on to Waimea. Aloha, Waimea. You can introduce your testifier.
Aloha, Chair. Our testifier is Lisa Andrews, representing herself in Ohana, speaking in support of Bill Number 100 and Bill 37 Draft 5. Please state your name and let me know when you transition.
Aloha, Chair, Kanuha, and County Council. My name is Lisa Andrews. Mahalo for taking my testimony. In regards to Bill 100, this bill is one that makes good sense. Councilwoman Margaret Willie's bills tend to do that. I do like clear definition on how much trash will come from the east side to the west side. My question would be, who would oversee the decision-making on which, how many trucks can come over when they can? Would common sense says pass this bill? Bill 37 is another common sense piece of legislation. Any tuning up of ethics rules is a good thing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Moving on to North Kohala. Aloha, North Kohala. You can introduce your testifier.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to introduce Albert Ahegma. He will just be speaking on three resolutions and two bills, and he will advise council when he transitions. Please restate your name for the record.
Once again, my name is Albert Ahegma. Over 30-year resident of Hawaii. For the last four years, I've been covering news, but I'm also in the creative endeavors in agriculture. I would like to speak in support of several of the bills, but with precautions as to how any of these bills or resolutions may be interpreted or misinterpreted by the public or those in government offices. Thank you.
Are you transitioning or are you done?
No. On the purchase of property, any purchase as Resolution 28715, I'm also from the Ka'ou District originally, and I am totally in support of this protection of the environment. I'm transitioning now to Resolution 2828315, the enterprise zones. I have concerns for this type of bill. Will these enterprise zones entertain people who are not state citizens? Will tax money go to multinationals, corporations from other countries, corporations that destroy the INA, or corporations that are pharmaceuticals, or into chemical agriculture or products related to these companies? I think that there should be a scrupulous analysis of, once again, at all levels for families who are related or have full or even partial ownership in such companies that use these enterprise zones. And I think there should be very little insider information going on in the government as to family members of taking advantage of such enterprise zones. I am very concerned about these matters because, and I will state this in relation to all of these subjects. I've been in Hawaii a long time. I met an FBI off-duty, and he said Hawaii is the most corrupt state in the nation, and it's not really an illegal state. And I am very concerned. I haven't been attending such meetings of these because of the corruption out of hand. And I'm so glad to see a special bill. But this resolution, the enterprise zone, could be a Pandora's Box to allow multinationals, enterprises which destroy the INA and the health of our citizens and the native population. I think it needs to be overseen in some way, not just allowed. Thank you. I'm done with that one. And now Hospice 31915. I'm a retired citizen. I paid my dues in the world and raised my family. Hospice is an important group, and I just want to speak in their behalf, having died and come back in my body and had three heart attacks and still doing my callings. Hospice helps a person transit from this world to the next. Thank you for supporting them and their need for equipment. And as far as the Refuge Bill Number 100, I have made past testimony about recycling. I'm much in belief of recycling, but I do think that there needs to be a clarification to the public about the definition of what is organic green waste that's being recycled or transported to the other side of the island. It's not just about saving money. The head of the green waste in North Kohala has stated, and it was published in a newspaper, that organic farmers should not use the green waste. I know organic farmers who use the green waste or people who think that it's usable. And I asked in past testimony that a clear definition be made about what's in the green waste, if there's altrazine and glycophates and other chemicals from poisons from people's properties or business or the government. I think that there should be some effort to separate, this is a very difficult one, separate organic green waste with defined what organic is from the regular green waste. I know that there are organic farm tours being given and people using this green waste assuming that it's safe. I think it's wise to save money and ship it someplace, including other ways than recycling it. I've testified against burning it at huge cost to the county. I think that this refuse thing needs to stay on the table. I think that it should be shipped to the other side if it saves money, but there are problems with it still that need to be defined. Thank you. I'm done with that one. And now the Code of Ethics, 37.5. One reason I haven't attended many meetings is, as I stated, that what I call organized and disorganized crime and corruption, not only in Hawaii, but in the other states in the nation and in the government, is rampant. The fall of the Roman Empire, somebody named Cicero was an honest senator. He tried to work with the corruption of the falling Roman Empire and situation. There was a death of the leader, and then Mark Antony took over. Why am I mentioning this? Because history is repeating itself in the fall of the American empire. And Hawaii is in a unique situation related to this. There will be leaders, and there will be those who bend to corruption. I want to commend somebody. Tulsi Gabbard was on national TV and disclosed the truth about certain things on national television. She is a leader. I celebrate several leaders in our own county council, especially Margaret Willie and several other members of the county council. The people who are remembered in history are the really evil ones or the few who stand up against evil and corruption. And I think it's very important, there's been a lot of money passed in aloha and grease the palm and other ways. Campaign spending is still not quite right. And so long as offices can be bought and people can be bought and their souls compromised, we'll never have a clear democracy again. And I celebrate this bill, this Code of Ethics, and I know it's a struggle because those people, most, all politicians have good intentions. However, it's very tempting to take extra money. I'm very disconcerted about our own mayor. And having been in the news, I knew just before his election that a journalist was trying to interview him, and he was meeting with, well, not the best of people. And he ran out the back door. I think the fact that we'll just let it pass and politicians are not above the law. If there's corruption and chicanery and misuse of funds or nepotism or...
Please summarize.
And I would say that we need another Bill of Ethics that's stronger. And thank you for passing this Bill of Ethics, and I am totally behind it. And I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony.
Mahalo for your testimony. Okay, there's no testifiers in Pahoa or Na'alahu, so we will come back here to Hilo and bring up the next two testifiers, Darcy Perez and Joy Cash. Good morning. Again, just press the button, make sure it's on, introduce yourself, and you may begin when you're ready.
Aloha, kakaku.
Aloha.
My name is Darcy Perez. I'm a teacher at Nauhahio' Kaniopu'u. And I came to represent Nauhahio' and elementary kids. We are taking them to Emiloa, and we need bus transportation and to buy new dictionaries and books for them because we gained 100 more students this year, so we need to bring in more books. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony. Good morning.
Good morning. I just have to say on the way here, I saw the biggest, most beautiful rainbow, and it arced over Monakaia. Did you see it? And you saw it too. So to drink in that, the beauty that we live in, it's just, so I just wanted to share that with you all this morning. So thank you.
Could you repeat your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Joy Cash, and I'm a Hilo resident. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. All right. On Resolution 26815, I'm a member of the mayor's homeless task force, and my concern is with the mentally ill and with the homeless, two different things. Sometimes they get lumped together. And I know there are a lot of mentally ill that are incarcerated. And I don't, I'm not sure how that serves our community ultimately. Having some experience in the past in my clinical work with the mentally ill, you know, it's easy for the general public, I think, to lump them all into one big, well, let's just, you know, take them off the streets, let's lock them up. No, we have to come with a conscious resolution to this problem. Otherwise, it's just going to slip through our fingers again and again and ultimately cost us, what I've seen in different efforts on the mainland, is it ultimately costs the communities more if we don't come with a very conscious, well-thought-out plan to begin with? You know, the quick fixes are the expensive fixes, in my experience. So it's worth the time and effort to, you know, look at programs that have worked and then model them for our own communities here on the Big Island. So I encourage you to do that. And so many communities are very open. All you have to do is email them or call them up and say, hey, we got a problem. We know you have had some success here. And most counties are very happy to share their successes with us. So I encourage our county council to do that. On, I'm transferring, whatever they call it, transitioning to 28315. I am concerned as the, I think the man from Ka'ou, I'm concerned with who's going to be allowed in these enterprise zones. You know, I hear a lot of talk from the geku. Within a month of me arriving on the island, I heard people, elected officials, saying, you know, we got to get jobs, we got to get jobs, jobs is the thing, jobs is the thing. Well, yes, we do need jobs. And how, the kind of jobs and the kind of enterprises we invite to our island, again, needs some real consideration before we just jump on the money, flashing money in front of our eyes and we become blind. Many times, we become blind. We have to be wise about... We have to be wise about who we allow to our island and what kind of enterprise. And whenever I see these enterprise zones, I go, oh, let's make sure that they use renewable energy, make, attach that to the enterprise zones, attach zero waste. And once again, Ms. Zero Waste here is going to remind you that jobs, almost 567 within a job or two would be created by zero waste being implemented on our island. So I'm just not going to stop talking about that until it's done. So I think you're going to dream at night of me going, zero waste, please, all those jobs, only $2 million infrastructure. Three years later, $5 million in the coffers of the, in the county. I want that to resonate in your brain like a mantra. So anyway, I have concerns, and of course, one of my biggest concerns is enterprises that would destroy our Ina and not really contribute in the long run to the benefit of our, our island and our Kakee's future. So be wise, be wise in those decisions, and I'm trusting you to do that. Okay, I'm transitioning. I'm probably skipping over a lot of, I've seen a lot of great stuff, but I don't want to take too much time. Okay, and this is on Bill 100. I'm trusting that Ms. Willie has completely researched this and is coming up with a good solution. If it needs revision to make sure it's done in a proper way to protect our Ina, I'm sure she will do that. So, but in the meantime, I support her and her efforts towards dealing with our refuge problem until we get the full, there's an old saying, the full-tilt boogie of zero waste. So, okay, transitioning now to Bill 37. Again, Ms. Willie has come up with an approach to ethics that I think is sound and wise. I don't see how we can lose if we're ethical, you know, in the end. So I like to see this brought to our attention and to our, our process. Thank you. Okay, once again, Bill 103. I have to state my concern about homeland security. I don't feel any more secure since homeland security has been established. And I know on the, homeland security identifies any American citizen that opposes government policy as a domestic terrorist. This is not, you know, foolishness. This is stated, documented stuff. So when we talk about homeland security, look, look to the reality of it. It's easy to go, oh, yeah, we want to feel more secure. So anyway, I have, I have serious concerns about homeland security for very practical, experienced reasons that I stated last time I was here. Oh my gosh, don't tell me. I'm done. Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony.
Mahalo to you all. Thank you for your continued good work. Thank you.
Thank you. I see a few testifiers in Kohala, in North Kohala, so can you introduce your next two testifiers if they're there wishing to testify?
Aloha, Sharon. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Ray Schaefer, who's in support of Bill 100, and Elizabeth Doris, who is also in support of Bill 100. Mr. Schaefer, will you repeat your name?
My name is Ray Schaefer. I've lived in North Kohala for 30 years.
Hold on real quickly. We cannot see you on the screen, so if you can move closer to, yeah, the middle. There you go. Sorry, you can start all over again.
Yeah, my name is Ray Schaefer. I live in North Kohala.
Mr. Schaefer, sorry about that. You're right in the middle of our screen, cutting you off. So we want to make sure to see you while you're testifying. I apologize for cutting you off there, but yeah, if you can move a little bit closer to the middle. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm, my name is Ray Schaefer, and I live in North Kohala, lived here for 30 years, and I'm employed at the Hilton Waikolo Village, and I am definitely in support of Bill 100.
Is that it? Are you done?
That's sufficient.
Thank you. Ms. Doris, would you repeat your name for the record, please?
I'm Elizabeth Doris, registered voter in Kohala for 31 years, and I support Bill 100 and think that they should get extra trash from the closest eastern landfill to, and should, I understand, should take only two or three truckloads per month to make it so that the western side does not get fined, as they are getting at the present, what they've talked about will happen.
Is that it? Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mahalo for both of your testimonies. If you're coming back here to Hilo, we have Mark Hinshaw and Leonard Horowitz. Could you please come up to the testifier's table? Again, three minutes to testify on each agenda item. Restate your name for the record, and you may begin when you're ready.
Aloha, Kako. I'm here in support of Resolution 31515 by Councilmember Puleka in support of our Pahoa Holiday Parade. I just had breakfast with Auntie Maddie Green, and we both say e komo mai to our parade on December the 5th. So that's all. Thank you, Councilmember Puleka.
Mahalo for your testimony. Mr. Horowitz?
Yes.
Make sure, press the button to make sure your microphone's on.
On?
Yep.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Leonard Horowitz, and I've been attempting to be a good citizen here for about 11 years. And I'm the author of 18 books, five documentary films. My latest book is called Space Pearl Harbor. I'm here in support, and I thank you so much for bringing the Ethics Bill forward because essentially, ethics is the basis for our civility. Ethics, morals, values, the way we treat each other, the way we engage in our justice systems. And the reason why I'm really here is because I'm a victim of organized crime. For the last 10 years, I have been engaged in what the excellent, articulate Kohala resident articulated with regard to the FBI stating that this state, and particularly this island, is probably the most corrupt state in the United States. I have been embattled to bring forward on this island, a wonderful, as someone who is heavily involved in natural medicine, somebody who is very well-connected internationally to World Organization for Natural Medicine practitioners, to bring a rural health clinic, to bring wonderful things that people of Hawaii can be proud of. And yet, the land has been stolen from us, title has been stolen from us, Third Circuit Court officers of the courts have been outrageously corrupt, stealing, forging documents, transferring, fraudulently transferring titles, creating mortgages, notes, all before the willfully blind judges in the Third Circuit Court. I look at this issue as being central to the Ethics Bill because it talks about fair treatment of the citizens of Hawaii. I'll give you a great example. I was in court just the other day, and I had witnessed a young woman who was being prosecuted for becoming pregnant, getting angry with the man who inseminated her and left her. She was being prosecuted by our prosecutors for yelling at him in a parking lot.
Thirty seconds.
I have here a letter from the prosecutor's office that I received yesterday, having submitted cases, at least a dozen complaints over the past 15 years. The letter that I just received from the prosecutor's office says, sorry, the case that you submitted in 2004 is now defunct because of statute of limitations. The evidence that we have submitted is outrageously clear and convincing that there is fraud and crime and corruption on this island, where the federal government of the United States says that there is at least now, this year, $3.5 billion of marijuana leaving this island.
Thank you, sir.
I think, I encourage you all, and I thank you all for at least taking a baby step forward in passing 37 Ethics Bill, and particularly, thank you, Margaret Willi.
Okay, moving on to the next two testifiers. I think there's nobody else on the other side wishing to testify. We'll come back, we'll continue with Hilo. We have Paul Comaro Jr., aloha, and Joe Pierce. If you could come up to the testifier's table, please.
Which button am I on?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, my trusted servants. You're all smiling this morning. I'm here to deliver your second notice. I personally handed all of you the writ of quell warranto that was served on the Supreme Court of the United States of America. I believe this is a de facto state. I'm not sure. That hasn't been resolved yet, but I'm sure it will be. However, I want to address this issue of RICO racketeering. It was just said and heard here that we live in a very corrupt environment on this island. I have been in court myself for a misdemeanor, and it was dismissed without prejudice. Now, I also want to recognize the fact that I'm here today not only addressing for myself, but also for the Hawaii common law grand jury of this county. We, the people, are sick and tired of this corrupt business that goes on behind the walls, beyond these walls of the county and the judiciary across the street. Some of us are intelligent enough to do our due diligence and to begin to investigate. So from this point on, we are going to set up office in that office over there that is provided for the public. And we'll let you know what day we're going to set up, okay? But it will be one day a week, and we will have someone there who will open their hearts to the public who have issues that they want to get addressed since they cannot get satisfaction perhaps from the county or the judicial system. So again, if you did not read that document that I gave you a year ago on December the 1st when you were sworn in, I suggest you go back and do that. The county clerk has a copy of that. It's registered, it should be, and if it isn't...
You have 30 seconds.
If it isn't, someone will be prosecuted. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Mahalo for your testimony. Next, we have Joe Pierce.
Good morning. My name is Joe Pierce. Good morning. I'm here on three bills and a resolution. I believe I forgot to write the resolution in. It's very, very quick. It's just Resolution 268 with a stepping up in mental health. Very briefly, first, I'd like to say thank you to all the people in the county that work with these individuals and help. I listened to a gentleman testify to this last month, and I know the kind of struggles that they deal with. I hear what he says, and I just wanted to extend a thank you to those efforts, those many people and what that points to. Lastly, I'd like to invite anyone, Chair or my representative or the sponsor of this, to come with me during the lunch break or anytime, really, go over to the courthouse. We pay $25 cash, and there's a file there waiting that I've ordered months ago. And in that file, you open it up and you'll see a courtroom here with Judge Harry Friedas. There was a woman who was being charged, who most definitely, and please don't believe me, please look at the footage. I know this because I was shackled and chained sitting right next to her at the time for a nonviolent victimless crime, much like the ones you've heard many people here testify today. And she was most definitely, according to her behavior, qualified as mentally ill, and you don't have to be a doctor to know that. She couldn't state a word. She had frizzled, disheveled appearance. She could say nothing in her own defense. And if you listen to this judge constantly try and push her out of this system so that she can be released, he knows that he has to get certain things on the transcript, and he cannot get them because she cannot even answer the word yes to save herself and get her out of jail. And so he says repeatedly, I see you shaking your head yes, I see you shaking your head yes. I'm watching her head from four feet away, and I can't see any shaking of a head. So all I'm saying is, where are these people going? I looked into the documents. I can't find out, and maybe I'm wrong, and if so, someone, please correct me, but what's going to happen? Rather than, and I don't, again, I don't want to disrespect the people that are supporting this bill who work with these individuals because they, they do work hard, and this is just an issue I want to bring up. That video exists, and, and nobody has to believe these words for it. Moving on. Excuse me, just one second. For my timer. Okay, moving on to Bill 103, 112, and 37. Let me touch on the ethics very quickly. I do support this bill, even though I don't particularly agree with the details, simply because I believe it's a step in the right direction. And I think it's important when people, you know, maybe not agree with a certain component of legislation compromise, right, trying to push it through. I'd like to just state publicly that I thank Margaret Willi for her efforts in bringing justice, a lot of what you've heard today, more so than average, in my short experience here, speaking to those matters and to that effect. As far as ethics go, lastly, as far as, I still have a problem with it. I just want to acknowledge that while I support it, I don't particularly support the county government and what it represents, nor do I consider myself subject to its authority and jurisdiction, much like for the reasons that you've heard today. Reasons, might I add, that have nothing to do with this being Hawaii or us being in Hawaii on these islands. This is an argument that could be made in any state of the Union from one corner to the other, and it's just a federal template that I think that we're having an issue with as members of the public, being applied to this island and being supported by the few hundred people who are actually the ruling class in power over the 200,000 or so inhabitants here. Moving right along to Bill 103, 112. Bill 103 and 112 have to do with accepting federal grants and police spending. 103 is $360,000 for homeland security. I did all the digging I could find, and it simply says specialized equipment for terrorism and for homeland security. Now, I'd like to know what this is. I was in the military. I'm well aware of the kind of equipment and new cutting-edge capabilities to some extent that they have. And let me just give an example to the public to hear. In New York, there was a recent story that said the police department there was using these vans with no windows that was emitting X-rays and other forms of radiation so that they could see into other vehicles in the name of terrorism and injecting bombs. But they have no scientists on their squad, they have no, no concern whatsoever for the effects of being assaulted with X-rays, and you're not even aware of this going on. I'm using that as an extreme, just to illustrate that the public wants to know what these funds are getting. I definitely want to know. This country and that federal template that again is being applied here has nothing to do with the respect for the, for privacy and with the advances of technology and electronically. Respecting our privacy is not something that the federal government, template state government, template government, county government is interested in protecting. So this is why I'm here, and many members of the public are here. We don't, I'm going to address for our grievances, so we're having to speak up and do what we can outside of the system. Let me speak, checking time, let me speak specifically to the police locally. I have concerns because I... I have concerns because I've personally and through many members of the public experienced the police here openly committing violations of rights, and they, we have no redress of grievances. I've brought this up before, I won't spend any time on it here, but basically, I mean, I have a letter from the police commission here for reports I filed way back in like April or May, and delayed now, looks like I'll be in in November sixteenth. And one of the complaints had to do with thirteen different officers' failure to complete reports beyond a few sentences that drastically impacted some justice, she would call it. And the number one complaint against police officers, if you go to the Hawaii Police Department website, you'll see if you compile all the numbers, that number one, faraway is incomplete filing of reports. Now, that's what they call it, who knows what it means, but that's number one by far, and second place has half as many. So it's a big issue, and they denied it because it was outside of the ninety days before I knew what I could do about it. Further, the reason why I don't feel that the members of the public should be trusting in the police or the government and not subjecting themselves, excuse me, to the authority of it is also because of the Internal Affairs Division. I don't want to bring up the past more than absolutely necessary, but in two thousand and twelve, there was a family here who were raided by the police during a cannabis raid, and during that, an officer inappropriately touched a fourteen-year-old. For instance, the privacy, I won't go any further. That officer is now in charge of Internal Affairs. He won Officer of the Year, and he's now the police, who are entrusted with policing, our police. And in less than twenty-four hours, I got shot down. So why do we, you know, this is why I'm here, and why people are here, saying, "Whoa, you're funding the police, you're funding my oppression, and I don't have a redress of grievances." Therefore, I see this monopoly as a threat to my freedoms, and I'm going to work as hard as I can to organize this community and to provide options to break this monopoly. Speaking to the gentleman, I mean, I'm going to a meeting tomorrow with a gentleman who drives with no plates, has no license, and he's not being touched, and he's got permission. And this is, again, a federal issue, and this can be spread far and wide, and we will, because all the permits and fees and licenses and everything that you're collecting are because of a statutory system which is not in line with the common law system mentioned here just a few moments ago. And the county does that, and the state and the federal, so they can collect all this money, and taxes is enforced at the point of a gun ultimately. Every bit of legislation and privilege of exercise of authority this council has ever, ever enacted has been ultimately supposedly by theory of the power of the people and enforced at the point of a gun or a cage. So if you don't believe enforcing people with a gun, and you like, you know, a voluntary society and trying to come up with something like that, then you are for another option to the monopoly on governance and police insecurity here. How much time? Not much left. The judges, let's see. This is issue of jurisdiction. Again, nothing to do with the state, could be brought up anywhere. I've gone to a court, I'll end with this, I don't have any time for anything else, even though I've got more. Went in there for a ticket, I was driving a friend's car, not important, my details aren't important. What is important is that, you know, I'm, again, being forced to a fourth hearing, four times I have to show up in the court, otherwise they'll get a bench warrant, and they'll come get me, you know, time and places they're choosing. And I'm simply asking a question. What evidence does the prosecutor's office that this council funds, what evidence do they present to the judge in all of these nonviolent victimless cases that speaks to jurisdiction, the element of jurisdiction, which by their own definitions, if you listen to one of their speeches before traffic court, they will admit they have to describe and submit jurisdiction in accordance with international law. This does not happen, period, point blank. I will end with a challenge. Anybody here, President of the United States, Supreme Court Justice, I'm not saying this because I'm smart, I simply know to point to facts, I know where they are, and I can articulate it clearly, that they don't. Doesn't have to do with Hawaii. It has to do with a hustle that is a template going on. They can't show jurisdiction, and when I ask them, "No, no, 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 no," they get mad, they throw you out, they kick you out at the point of a gun, and then you complain about it to the judicial office, and they send you a letter that says, "We don't do anything about that." I know that they're sending arrest warrants because they won't answer a question that they're lawfully and legally compelled to answer.
Thank you, sir.
They won't. You're welcome. Thank you for listening to me. That's all I have. Have a good day.
Mahalo for your testimony. We have one more here in Hilo, Sheri Kane. And if there's anybody else that would like to testify, please submit your name to the testifier's table, and we will be more than happy to have you come up. But make sure your microphone's on, just press the button, and repeat your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Sheri Kane, and I'm here to testify in support of Bill thirty-seven, Margaret Willey's bill. I want to also thank her for bringing this bill forward. I think that she is a hero and that should serve as a model for not only Hawaii, this island, but other states. She has been very fearless in what she's doing to say things that no one else will say, and we appreciate her for that. I want to also continue to address what Dr. Horowitz had mentioned about the corruption on this island, and that how nonviolent victimless crimes are actually being prosecuted. But in our case, we know that the prosecutors know that the person who is attempting to steal our land or has stolen our title right now is a criminal or is actually a very bad person, which he's told us. We also know that the former prosecutor admitted to us that he knows that our house has been stolen. It's not easy to prosecute a stolen house. They didn't just rob our house, they have stolen our house. So grant...
I know you have a specific case pending, but I want to kind of reel you back into the Ethics Bill.
Yes, and I'm here to address it.
Thank you.
Who is this person that's being protected? That's actually, he's actually a danger to everyone on this island. He's a local lawyer, his name is Paul J. Sola Jr. He runs an ayahuasca church. It's an illegal ayahuasca church, according to the DEA. Why is Mr. Sola allowed to get away with running an illegal ayahuasca church on this island? And also, why does he have over fifty properties and now about to acquire ours? Why is he being questioned? Why is he, why is he able to take young people in the community, tell them they will seek God if they go and they try this ayahuasca brew in a controlled environment on the Hamakua Coast, which we have the address of, a sixty-seven acre compound, that he's committing these crimes not only against us, but against everyone in the community that could become a victim to him? Your children can become a victim to him? Just people seeking God, people seeking a path, and this man has been able to get away with this? And they're going to claim statute of limitations, even though this is ongoing? And even though this man is able to just kind of squirm away? I asked the FBI, "What do you think is going on?" I have a contact at the FBI. They said they couldn't understand why the prosecutors were sitting on this. Well, I can tell you why I think they are: politics. And politics should not overcome ethics. Politics should have nothing to do with what's happening here in our community. Just because people want to stay politically correct, and they don't want to, for instance, disturb the drug trade that may be bringing underground money into this, to this county, to this state, like Dr. Horowitz says, there's drugs leaving, how are they leaving? And so I'm here to just bring awareness to everyone here that's not aware of this menace, Mr. Paul J. Sola Jr., who's actually, as long as he can continue to get away with that, and right now, he's actually trying to take a hundred acre property, so he goes after larger parcels.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mahalo for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to reach out. If there's anybody else wishing to testify who haven't been able to testify, please let us know. If not, hearing or seeing none, I'm going to close public testimony and move on with our agenda. Mr. Iligan?
Mr. Chair, is it possible to have a two-minute break?
Sure. We can take a brief recess before we move on with the agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, aloha, everybody. We are coming out of recess. Mahalo for your patience. We just ended public testimony, and we will begin with order of resolutions. I've had a few requests to take several items out of order, but we will start with Resolution three-two-three. I know they have to get back to teaching their classes, so I really wanted to get them back to the kids. Resolution, oh, sorry, three-two-four.
Three-two-four.
My bad.
Resolution three-two-four-dash-fifteen transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from a designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to Ah Poonanaleo Incorporated to assist with expenses related to Ohana Nights, Ekakula O'Navahe O'Kalani Opu charter school, transfers fifty thousand dollars from Court Council Services Continency Relief Account, Council District Five, and credits to Liquor Control Public Programs Account introduced by Mr. Paleka.
Mr. Paleka.
Motion to approve Resolution three-two-four.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Paleka, seconded by Ms. Poindexter. Go right ahead, Mr. Paleka.
I'd just like to request support for this program. If Darcy or Ms. Hayes wants to come up and add a little bit more information regarding this program of Ohana Nights.
And again, if you could restate your name for the record, we'd really appreciate.
My name is Kamale Hayes. I guess for our family nights, we've been doing it for many years, and it's actually Hawaiian language classes for our families. But this year, we wanted to add on an additional night for our families so that they can actually see what the kids are doing in the school and also provide resources to our parents to help the kids at home and also revive our language at home too, so not only in the school, but at home too. So that was kind of our goal this year, to have more family involvement with our families.
Darcy, you wanted to add anything?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Well, I'm just, I mean, visiting the school and seeing what kind of programs they have, I hope that was very, I really found it necessary for us to support this program, so I'm just asking for your support, and thank you, guys. Thank you.
Mr. Paleka, Mr. Iligan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Councilmember Paleka for this financial assistance because this definitely benefits the families in the district that I represent that goes to the school and providing the kids a safe environment that does not include drugs or alcohol on the events that you would host. And I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Paleka, and thank you, Anavahe staff, and everything that you have been providing for the families in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iligan.
Councilmembers, any other discussion? And Ms. Eoff, just let me know if you ever need to, if you ever want to chime in, but seeing, oh, Ms. David?
Yes, just one, one comment. Aloha, and I really want to thank you folks, this generation of our people, for doing what you're doing, and the, especially the O'lelo, coming from a generation that was not privileged to have these opportunities. I really honor you folks and praise you folks for what you do for our people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. David. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine ayes, motion passes.
Mahalo.
Mahalo. Do we, we can do the, we don't need to do a roll call with another council member in Kona, do we? Okay. Okay, thank you. I see Captain Wana in the back, so I'd like to take the resolution accompanying Bill, the companion bill, Resolution three-two-three.
Resolution three-two-three-dash-fifteen authorizes the Office of the Mayor to enter an agreement with the United States Department of Justice pursuant to wire-apply statute section forty-six dash seven for a justice assistance grant to the Hawaii County Police Department, funds of ninety-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, will be used by the Police Department to purchase equipment and related technology to assist in tracking and managing accreditation files of microfilm conservation project and installation of a security door system for its Criminal Investigation Division. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution three-two-three-dash-fifteen.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Mr. Paleka. Ms. Eoff, any discussion?
Who did you say was there in Hilo?
We have Captain, we have Captain Wana here.
Okay, I don't know if the captain would like to explain it further.
Okay, yeah, she's coming up to the testifier's table, so Ms. Captain Wana, if you'd like to just state your name again for the record, and if there's any more information to give us about this resolution.
Hi, good morning. My name is Captain Amy Wana, I'm with the Hawaii Police Department, and I have no other information for this project, however, I am here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to state that security door systems, I don't really know where that, where that is being installed.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I'm sorry, Ms. Eoff, can you restate that again?
Okay, thank you. My notes are telling me that some of the funds are used, are going to be used for installation of security door systems for the Criminal Investigation Division.
That's correct.
Could you, could you explain?
Sure. As part of the accreditation system, they wanted to ensure that the files that are maintained within these divisions are adequately secured and safeguarded. Currently, there are key swipe systems that are within the external doors of the station, however, into these individual areas, the detectives may have work on their desk, and they may need to leave in an expeditious manner for whatever reason, and these materials could potentially become compromised or exposed to people that are not privy to this information. So these key card swipe systems will allow only the people that belong in that area, and it's controlled by the department who has the access to within, to these specific doors. And this will be both in East and West Hawaii, the two separate divisions.
Okay, thank you very much for explaining that.
Ms. Eoff, are you yielding?
Yes, I'm yielding.
Okay, I don't know who was first, but Ms. Willey.
Okay. Just for the sake of the public, I want to say that what we're doing here are things to prevent any corruption or alteration, to secure documents and, and prevent the opportunity from those who should not have access to them from having access. So I wanted to say, this is a step in the right direction for those who are concerned about, you know, potential corruption, that the, these funds are going towards just preventative measures to ensure that that doesn't happen.
Thank you, Ms. Willey, Mr. Iligan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Willey clarified what I was about to say, and also, according to the justification, you got the Power DMS suit project, microfilm conversion project, and as Councilmember Eoff mentioned, the CID door security system. Testifier mentioned that we should be asking what these equipments are being purchased, and I just wanted to make sure that the public's aware that the example that was brought before us, that there was an X-ray tool to see other vans, that kind of worried me, myself. So I just wanted to make sure that the public is not worried by that example. And maybe if you want to clarify anymore with these three points that you made, that that'll be okay, and I'll yield.
With the CLIA accreditation system that we're looking to obtain, that's actually mandated by the CLIA accreditation, and it'll basically help the department be able to better track multiple things, whether it be proofs or policies, procedures, trainings, it'll just make it a better system for us to be able to track these things electronically, produce them when we're required to for the accreditation staff. For the file preservation with the microfiche system, these are old police reports that the public still has the right to, you know, they, they want to be able to access it. We're having some difficulties with equipment that are defunct or no longer operational, and that's why we're seeking the conversion of this equipment from microfiche into a PDF format, so it's more easily and readily available.
Well, thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Iligan, Mr. Paleka.
Morning, Captain Wana. Just in regards to this, I like the, comfortable with the microfilm upgrades and other technology. In regards to the security system to create sterile areas, is it one location or multiple locations?
It'll be in the Hilo Police Station and the Kona Police Station. And within each station, in Hilo, this will be for the vice and criminal investigation sections, so I believe those are three doors, and then in the West Hawaii, it's going to be four separate doors because it'll be in the vice, the criminal investigation section, and juvenile aid section. section.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paleka. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing or seeing none, all in favor of this motion, say aye. Any opposed? It's nine ayes. Motion passes. Can we move to this companion bill, Bill 112?
Bill 112 amends ordinance number 15-57 as amended the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. Appropriates revenues in the federal grants justice assistance grant account, $92,825, and appropriates the same to the justice assistance grant account. Funds be used by the Police Department to purchase equipment and related technology to assist in tracking and managing accreditation files, a microfilm conservation project, and installation of a security door system for its criminal investigation division. Introduced by Ms. Eoff.
Ms. Eoff.
Move to approve Bill 112.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Mr. Paleka. Ms. Eoff, any more discussion?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to say congratulations. Captain Wana mentioned their CLAIA certification, and I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Eoff. Councilmembers, any discussion? Okay. Hearing or seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes. Motion passes. Thank you. Um, we also have Prosecutor Mitch Roth here, so I'd like to take Resolution 268, Draft Two.
Resolution 268-15, Draft Two, enlists the County of Hawaii in the stepping up initiative to reduce the number of persons with mental illnesses in Hawaii Community Correctional Center. Urges the Hawaii Police Department, Office of Prosecuting Attorney, the Hawaii State Judiciary, and the Office of the Public Defender to work with the State of Hawaii Directors of Public Safety and Public Health to reduce the number of persons with mental illnesses that are incarcerated in support of the stepping up initiative. Introduced by Mr. Iligon.
Mr. Iligon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve Resolution 268-15.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligon, seconded by Mr. Paleka. Go right ahead, Mr. Iligon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we get into discussion, I just wanted to quickly make an amendment on Resolution 268 with the contents of Communication 448.7.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligon and seconded by Ms. David to amend Resolution 268-15 to the contents of Communication 448.7.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And, uh, Mr. Iligon, go right ahead.
Thank you. At this time, I wanted to call up Prosecutor Mitch Roth and also Les Estrella. Before Prosecutor Mitch Roth takes on the mic, I just wanted to mention this amendment is a result of the discussion that we had and to better clarify the intent of this resolution. Prosecutor, if you have any comments regarding the amendments?
Good morning, Councilmembers. And I thank you, Mr. Iligon, for making the changes. With the changes that have made-
Mitch, if you could restate your name again for the record, sorry.
Sorry. Mitch Roth, prosecuting attorney for the County of Hawaii. I just wanted to thank you for making the changes. With the changes that are made, we fully support, support this. And I heard some other testifiers, and I just want to say, I was in Washington, DC, last week and was able to talk to one of the co-authors of the stepping up initiative. And I was a judge from Miami-Dade. And what they've been able to do is, in Miami-Dade, is they've been able to take low-level offenders, and when they get arrested, rather than bringing them to the jails, they bring them to a case management teams. So we asked, how can that, you know, how do you guys do that? And they, they explained that they were actually 49th out of 50th states in Florida on funding for mental health, which really intrigued me a lot more. What they did is they used the Medicaid/Medicare funds to pay for these things. So I know, I heard, you know, it'd be great, but it's not very hopeful. It actually is pretty hopeful. They were able to significantly reduce the number of people incarcerated in their jails, which also took, you know, a load off of the prosecutors. And so it is possible. The other thing I heard in Washington was from Camden, New Jersey, where they did something similar. They matched through a research grant, the people going to their treatment facilities, something like a Bay Clinic treatment facility. They matched the frequent flyers of people that were overrunning their ERs and, and their, their resources. They matched them with the police. They found that they were the same people. And they were able to help the situation by going out and doing out-service treatment. So there are, there is a lot of hope with the changes, the way this is written. We are in full support of, of this measure.
Thank you. And before Mr. Estrella speak, I just wanted to mention to the public that this effort was due to the help of many individuals, but most importantly, Mr. Estrella, who brought this to me and discussing the matter, how we needed to make this first step to get involved with the stepping up program. But I also want to send out a special thank to the Warden Carreros in H-triple-C, and also the Director for Public Safety, who put in his testimony and comments regarding this resolution. So the intent of this, and I wanted to ask Mr. Estrella, is what's the next step for the purpose of this resolution is to reduce the number of recidivism. I can never say that. Recidivism. I can't, I gotta apologize. I had a hard time speaking English when I was little, and I still have a hard time pronouncing these big words. Of persons with mental illness who are charged with nonviolent offenses in the Hawaii Community Correctional Center. So I just wanted to ask, because I'm going to be seeking your guidance since you're going to be working directly with individuals who have mental illness who are charged with nonviolent crimes.
Good morning. My name is Les Estrella. I'm speaking on behalf of the Going Home Consortium. I want to thank all of you really for supporting this and moving this through. This is a first step of many things to, to come for our county here for this initiative. One of the things that spelled, is spelled out in this resolution is the plan of actually moving this through. With this resolution, it enlists us with resources with NAICO, National Association of Counties, who is leading this initiative. So with this national initiative, and I'm happy that Prosecutor here had met with Judge Leifman, who actually came to Hilo back in 2008 at another Going Home Consortium funded event back then. And he met with quite a few people here, and he's also pretty supportive of, of the things that we're doing in our county. So with this, we actually have been moving forward by convening diverse team of leaders. The Going Home Consortium meets monthly and has been meeting since 2004. And this is where these diverse teams of, of leaders have been tirelessly working throughout all these years to address reentry and recidivism in our community with great success, I might add. With that, the other, the other types of resources that we hope to finally get would be some funding, maybe as some leverage, working together with the state and the county, and also some federal funds. And that's our plan moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iligon. Ms. Willie?
Um, yeah, I will be supporting this, but at the same time, I do have, just want to say, all of this call to action, I think that the step up to action is not action. I mean, I think that Mitch Roth gave an example of where someone is acting. Here, we're convening, and we're studying, and we're that. I just, you know, we need to know that there's, what are those next steps that we are actually going to implement some of these programs? So I'm hoping that maybe Councilmember Iligon will sort of follow this and what can we do where we're actually as quickly as possible moving on those steps. Also, in terms of where we've added this word, the recidivism word, you know, for me, it's even more, how do we keep people out of the system altogether? You know, once they're sort of in jail and in that exposure, it's, how do we, you know, when you get to the police and you go to the prosecutor, and it's court, okay, there's a bad guy, or what do we do with the bad guy? You know, how do we move them, have that other choice, whether it's over towards some kind of task force or, or group or intervention group, and, and keep them and move them where they're not getting into that whole jail culture? And, and you know, then you start learning, and then you have a record, and then you get out, and it's like, how do I get a job? I've got this, you know, conviction on my record, and I can't do that. I mean, I just had someone homeless come into my office saying I can't get housing because I've got this conviction on my record, so I can't get housing. I'm sitting in my car, living in my car. So I'm just like, how, that here we're saying, we want to get these people out. So we're saying, no, we, we do not want them in jail. But at the same time, we're not really saying where we want them. You know, if we're going to move them out, we're not, I think one of the testifiers said, okay, if they're not there, are we just pushing them out in the community and not dealing with them and let them survive to make room for more, you know, violent persons in jail? So we're saying, it's like the homeless. We don't want them here, but are we providing the alternative to them? So I'm not saying that may not exist, but I don't feel it's as clear from the resolution that it isn't just a matter of that we want to shove these people out of jail and put them on the streets. So that's a concern, and I think you've made some points that say, you know, this isn't really the case. But reading this, it is somewhat the impression that one gets.
So one of the things I, I've recently learned about the stepping up initiative that we're talking about adopting here is creating more of these crisis management teams. And last month, when we talked about what was happening on our island, we used to have crisis management teams, but, you know, they, they've cut funding for them. And so the interesting part for me in this whole conversation with the judge from, from Miami-Dade is the way they were able to do it was they didn't have to go find new funds. The funds are there through Medicare and Medicaid. What they needed to do was they needed to find locations and caseworkers, and they actually had private entities. Again, a lot of this, as I said last month, is a, really the, the state that needs to be taking the lead role here rather than the county. But by passing the resolution, you're telling the, the state, hey, we have, we have some ideas. You guys need to take some, some, some action here. But in the meantime, we're also taking action on our end. We started looking at some of the tools that they, they've used. In addition to looking at state, federal funders, we're also meeting with and talking to some of the private vendors, some of the private funders, the Arnold Foundation, the Casey Foundation, various other resources out there that are also looking at solving this problem. And so we are starting to do that. But the initiative is really telling the state, we need to step up as a state and look at this. And there are other places that do it. The state needs to take the leadership.
Okay. Just on that, and getting people to work together, I look at, you came to the meeting that I had in Waimea on drugs and in the community, and also we had it in, in North Kohala. But looking at Hamakua Kohala Health, they now have a grant working with detox and that and helping people. They do not have enough space. They could do much more. But they don't have the space, and they're going out trying to work, let's say, with the Hamakua Hospital that has space. And, and how do we get them all to sort of work together? You know, so we're on the same team, and here's someone that actually has a program, and that's what we're looking for, program. And they could hire more people there and in Kohala if they had more space. So just getting all these people connected, and I just, in my area, oftentimes it's, well, you can take the bus over to, to Hilo or to Kona, but we don't have anything going on in our area. So I think we're, you know, really looking at, people won't do that, and they'll just wander around the streets in, you know, where they consider to be home. And we need to also look at decentralizing where those services are provided. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Chung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Les, if I could ask you a question. You know, you were the first one to introduce me to this whole notion of getting people connected with Medicare and Medicaid and all these other benefits, right? But do you need people on the ground to be able to do that?
Well, the case management, the case management system that currently exists is really underfunded, and that's true to state. The case managers that are in, that deal with this, individuals on a daily basis, that hook them up and link them to services, which includes healthcare and all of those other benefits that they would need. Their hours that they need, they can spend with them is so little that you hardly think that they could get any work done. And that's where the state, as Mitch had mentioned, needs to step up.
Which case management agencies are we talking about?
Care Hawaii is contracted. Also, there's Helping Hands Hawaii. I believe those are the two big ones. They are funded through Adult Mental Health Division.
Is there any more room, is there room for other, you know, smaller microagencies to develop to be able to augment, you know, what those, you know, Care Hawaii and all those other agencies are doing?
Yes. So there are other agencies also actually have, has funding. For instance, Hope Services has a contracted case manager with Adult Mental Health Division for mental health outreach. There are other entities that could provide other additional case management.
Well, I'm just talking about the possibility of emerging microagencies. Hope Services is a huge, you know, almost a conglomerate right now. But could smaller ones emerge? And the reason why I ask that is, you know, every year, we have these nonprofit, our nonprofit grant process, right? And, you know, if we could at least keep in the back of our minds the possibility of funding these types of microagencies, you know, of course, we'd have to, you know, assess the efficacy of these, these types of agencies in doing what we're talking about. But do you think we could make inroads in that regard? Because if we're going to wait for the state, you know, it might take a while. That's where the responsibility lies, as Mitch stated, and I agree 100%. But, you know, we have to try to see what we can do.
There is, there is certainly many ways, actually, of currently using the providers that are out there right now, especially the smaller ones, to specifically task certain case management systems for this specific issue.
Okay. Well, let's talk a little bit more about that as the months go on. Yeah. Thank you again, both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Mr. Paleka, on the amendment.
I think I'd just like to, Les, thank you, and Mitch, thank you for adding. In regards to the Medicare/Medicare reimbursement for this type of mental health treatment, and the two providers that you mentioned, I think that's, that's one part. But also where I think we could, really, it's about getting the support and collaborating, because the prosecuting attorney's office is going to have to work with public safety in releasing. Because when, if they're a pretrial offender, you basically presume innocent, yeah? But we're holding these mental health inmates while they're on pretrial. And a lot, and some of them are chronic. They come back, and that's why the term recidivism. But we all have to work together. The collaboration, this is the most important part, is the collaboration. And I'm glad they're having the meetings. I've attended a couple of them. It's getting everybody on the same page. Because without everyone on the same page, it's going to be very hard to achieve. And I see my warden over there, Peter Carreros, Les here, Mitch. I'm very optimistic that with signing on to, it, somebody says, hey, it's just an initiative. Oh, it means something. When people sit down, get together, and focus on one, on idea, get a real plan that works and initiates and executes their plan, it gets done. And that's what I, I think we're all here. The wording, the language, that's just the intent of what we're trying to do. But I know we're all trying to work toward getting our mental health individuals that maybe have an alternative and not being incarcerated. Because they don't belong there. I've been there, seen them come through, tried to help them. You know, it's just not right. They really don't belong there. They're vulnerable to other inmates. They really don't belong there, they're vulnerable to other inmates that, hey, those guys, they know what they're there for. Some of these individuals, unfortunately, you know, I feel, I really feel sorry for them, and I did too, when, when I was a corrections officer. Pete, give them the good work, man. But I'm just hoping for everyone's support in this initiative. We've got to get it going, help our mental health individuals, get some caseworkers, reimbursement for Medicaid, Medicare, get the money, the funding that way, let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puleka. Ms. Eoff, any discussion before we go to the second round?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to add something. I wholeheartedly support this resolution, and as far as the amendment, I think this was an excellent amendment to clarify that this involves people who are charged with nonviolent offenses, because we did hear testimony from some members of the community, I think last time and today, and I think this will clear that up, because there was some concern that there would be some danger to the community, but I, I didn't think so before, but I think this amendment makes that clear. I support the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. Mr. Iligon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make four points. Councilmember Willie, you made some good questions, and I definitely want to make sure those questions will be addressed, and I'll be following up with this issue. Councilmember Chung mentioned about the healthcare, and we're actually taking action in the sense of the Health Connector. They're coming to our Pohola Office, which is more accessible to the community that we represent, and we scheduled two days for them to show up. We're still not, we haven't confirmed yet, but it's Tuesday and Thursdays that we're looking to have them there, and that's closer in the sense of the constituent, it's reachable to them, and it's partnered with county and state. So we're doing that and actions wise regarding the Health Connector and trying to bring that closer to the public. I also want to thank Councilmember Puleka for pushing this to his Public Safety Committee, and that, working in Puna, I'll definitely be working with him regarding this, because he has a lot of knowledge regarding the, the pub, public system regarding the incarceration. And also to Councilmember Eoff, I hope that the amendment addressed the concerns of your constituent, because we were getting the emails and we wanted to make sure that all the questions were being addressed. And to everybody who's been involved, I just want to say thank you, because I wouldn't be able to make this happen without your help.
Thank you, Ms. Iligon. Any other discussion on this amendment? Okay, hearing or seeing none, all in favor of approving, of amending Resolution 268-15, Draft 2 with the contents of Communication 448.7, say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Now on to the main motion as amended. Oh, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chair, I think I have to make a, a motion to suspend our rules to allow us to vote on this matter, because this is the last reading. I don't know which rule it is, but I will, I will make a motion to suspend Rule Number 24 to allow us to vote on Resolution 268-15 today.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligon and seconded by Ms. David to suspend Rule 24 to allow us to vote on this measure today. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Now we can go into discussion on the main motion as amended. Mr. Iligon?
I don't think I need to make any further comment, unless other councilmembers wish to do so.
Thank you. Any other discussion, councilmembers, on the main motion as amended? Okay, hearing or seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, there is one more motion I would like to make, and that's just Rule Suspension on the Five-Day Hold.
The, okay. There's been a motion by Mr. Iligon to suspend our rules for the five-day reconsideration, and it's been seconded by Mr. Puleka. Is it, oh, there's no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Okay, and we also have, from the Planning Department, don't worry, Jane, we'll get to you in a bit, Resolution 311.
Resolution 311-15 authorizes exemption of certain code requirements pursuant to Section 201H-38 of the Hawaii Vice Statutes for the proposed Muhuli Heights Senior Neighborhood Project Phases Two and Three in South Hila, Hawaii, Tax Map Key 2-4-001184. Hawaii Island Development Corporation seeks exemptions from agricultural zoning requirements to allow for multifamily residential units so that it may continue construction of its affordable housing program for seniors. Introduce with Ms. David by request.
Ms. David?
Motion to approve Resolution 311. 311.
May I have a second? It's been moved by Ms. David, seconded by Mr. Puleka. Ms. David?
Yes, thank you. Is, from the department.
We have Jeff Darrel here from the department.
All right, Mr. Darrel, would you?
And we also have Sidney Fuque, I think. Are you here for that one too, or no? Okay. Oh, we have, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. Darrel. I think we discussed this a bit in the last meeting, but if you'd like to just really describe what this project is and the exemptions, and can move forward.
Make sure your microphone's on, and you can introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning, Chairman Kanuha and members of the County Council. Good morning. My name is Jeff Darrel. I'm a planner with the Planning Department under the Planning Division section. This resolution introduced by the, or for the Office of Housing and Community Development will allow certain exemptions from the zoning code and also from state land use requirements as far as the property being zoned agricultural through the state as well as the county, and will allow the multiple family dwelling uses on the property for Phase Two and Phase Three of this senior housing project. Phase One is complete, and so they are ready to begin with Phase Two and Three.
Thank you, Mr. Darrel. I believe I don't have any further questions. I really think this is a great project, and the fact, the, the changes and the modifications that you folks are making for this senior housing is, is a great change, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. David. Ms. Willie?
Yeah, Mr. Darrel, could you just very quickly state what the exemptions are?
If we, I'm not sure, I'm, there are, is, there are a list of exemptions under Exhibit A, and basically it's a general exemption that exempts them and allows the standards and requirements of the multiple family residential, 1,500 square foot zoning, instead of the agricultural zoning. They, they, obviously, there will be a conflict there, and this is a concern, but in this particular case, because this is more multiple family dwelling apartment-type complexes, there shouldn't be a conflict with the agricultural-type uses. My understanding is that there was a previous situation, that there was a conflict with the resolution allowing different types of zoning, but the current zoning still remains on the property. So this allows the applicant not to have to come in and go through the full process of rezoning state land use agricultural zoning as well as the county agricultural zoning to a state land use urban and a county RM 1.5 zoning. And it will allow them, it will afford them the allowances in the zoning code for that type of zoning.
Just sort of in the big picture of agriculture zoning and what we do with exemptions, I'm always looking at, well, I mean, we all support housing and we all want to do that, but at the same time, what are the other uses in agriculture? I mean, and just as an example, you know, I've been trying to work on, how do we allow composting in an agricultural zone? And that's, well, we'd have to do all these special permits, and if it's over 15 acres, you have to go through the state and, you know, tens of thousands of dollars and all this, and that's agriculture, you know? So I'm just, it's always, then it's, well, that kind of agriculture might offend somebody that's over here and they've got their residences in that. So, you know, I will support it, but I do think we need to sometimes look at these big pictures of, especially with the agricultural zone, you know, what we're allowing and what we're, what other, you know, like, you know, types of activities we're making go through all kinds of hoops. But here, we want to do it because it's our county and our state, then we allow the exemptions that we wouldn't allow, you know, another private party that's trying to do a business or that I feel is related to agriculture. So I just want to raise that issue. I know it's a little more not right on target of this, but it really is, you know, how we look at our agricultural zone and how we look at what gets exemptions and what gets given the go-ahead and that, so I just wanted to make that comment. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Puleka?
Morning, Jeff.
Good morning.
Is there, are they attempting to, maybe I should ask Jerome, to rezone the property for the long term?
My understanding is this will take care of that. So I, I'm, I do not believe that there is any intention in the future to rezone the property.
But wouldn't it be more consistent, I mean, with our zoning codes and?
It, it.
And since we're on the subject, I mean.
Yeah, it, it could be, I mean, but this is a simpler process and.
I'm, I'm comfortable going with housing for elderly especially, I'm all good, but I'm thinking just long-term, maybe we should just move it, move forward. It's just a suggestion, comment. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puleka. Any other discussion, councilmembers? Looking for Ms. Eoff? No, all good? Okay, we can move with the vote. All in favor of approving the motion, say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes.
Sir Chair?
Yes.
Would it be okay to take Resolution 314 out of order and also Bill 9293?
Sure, I want to do, there's a few more with the Planning Department right here, so I'm going to do those first, if that's okay. Bill 91, Mr. Clerk?
Bill 91 amends ordinance number 05-74, which reclassified lands from agricultural one acre, A-1 in Resort Hotel, 1,250 square feet, V-1.25 to multifamily residential, 2,500 square feet, RM-2.5 at Aho Kei First, North Kona, Hawaii, covered by Tax Map Key Previously included a portion of Parcel 54, applicant Kukui Development LLC, area 6.27 acres. The Lear Planning Commission forwards its favorable recommendation for this amendment, which would allow a 10-year time extension to Condition C, time to complete construction. Introduced by Mr. Iligon by request.
Mr. Iligon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve Bill 91.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligon, seconded by Ms. David. Mr. Iligon, did you want to start us off, or, okay. Ms. Eoff, any discussion?
And Mr. Tyler is still here, if anybody would like to further clarify some of his statements earlier, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank him for writing to me and to us, bringing out some of the important aspects of the archaeological preservation plan that need to be addressed as soon as possible. And if you look closer at Condition J, it is stated there what is required, and I think Mr. Tyler is planning to stay in close contact with the current developer owner to make sure that plans are put into, limitation measures are done as soon as possible, because there's, I would say deterioration or threats happening currently to these parcels, especially the Parcel 54. So I don't know if anyone has questions of Mr. Tyler. I've been able to feel confident that he's going to stay, stay in close contact and in touch with this parcel. He's got a personal connection as well as he's always pays, as far as I know, Mr. Tyler, attention, great attention to detail in these zoning ordinances. So I thank him for his, his comments today.
Thank you, Ms. Eoff. I'll open up discussion to everybody else as well. Mr. Chung, go right ahead.
Oh, yes, you know, I don't think it's a matter of asking Mr. Tyler any questions, because he was very clear in his concerns. I'm just wondering if there's a representative of the developer here who can, is, is there one? Who could, you know, make representations regarding those concerns brought up by Mr. Tyler? Or maybe if Mr. Tyler can just state that he is in contact.
I think the developer representative did speak to those at the last meeting, and I, my sense was he felt he had communicated that, so I just want to bring that point up.
Okay, then I guess maybe, Curtis, are you still around?
Morning, Mr. Chung.
Hi, Curtis. So are you comfortable with that representation made by Ms. Willie?
I'm comfortable with the, the interaction that I've had by letter, email, and phone with Mr. Baker regarding his understanding and his plan to follow through on protection of these, these traditional and cultural properties. Not only the ones located on the, to be developed property, but also Parcel 54, which is the one that has to be set aside. And my, my concern is, is that it's been, not only since you and I were on the council together, that this passed and nothing was done, but then there were two additional extensions for another 10 years, and now there's going to be another extension for, it was requested for five, the folks are about to pass 10, and I, and it says in, in the new language from the date of this amendment. So I just want to be sure that we don't put this off for another 10 years, because by then there probably be nothing left. And I stand to follow up not only with Mr. Baker, but also with the State Historic Preservation Division. Thank you.
Okay, and just for your information, Curtis, you know, several members of this body expressed those same concerns too about, you know, the continuing extensions during our last go-around. But thanks, Curtis, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chung, I appreciate it. Aloha.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Councilmembers, any other discussion on this? Okay, just, I want to say something. Oh, Ms. Eoff, did you want to say anything else? Okay, yeah, I also had those concerns, the first meeting, we, we heard this, this measure about the, not only the archaeological sites and the rest, the continued, or the, the starting of the restoration and protection of these sites, because, you know, this is a new owner, and they are willing to build out this, this development, which is, is definitely needed in our urban expansion district here in Kona, or not here in Kona, there in Kona. But my biggest concern was the protection of these sites, as Mr. Curtis, as Mr. Tyler has stated in his testimonies. So I'm glad, Uncle Curtis, that you're working with these developers to make sure that they do it in a right way, in the Kona way. So I appreciate your attentiveness towards this project and look forward to hearing good things come of it. So again, mahalo for your continued concern. Ms. David, one last.
One last question. Aloha, Mr. Tyler, Miley here. I just have one question for you. Would you be considering applying to be that, the entity with respect to Condition Would you be considering applying to be that, the entity with respect to Condition L, since you've been in conversations with Mr. Baker? I'm just curious whether you would be involved in that respect as being a possible entity.
Thank you for the question, Ms. David. I, and I appreciate your attention to that. I do intend and wish to be involved in the formation of and the work done by that entity. Whether or not it would be me personally doing that work, I kind of doubt that. But I do, I do feel that there is a need for an entity, in particular a 501(c)(3), to address these kinds of issues. This is not the only property in Kona which has this, this caveat on it, if you will. And I look forward to working not only with the landowners, but the planning department and the council, should that be necessary, to ensure that there is perpetual care and conservation of these sites in accordance with traditional and customary practice and the law.
Mahalo. Mahalo for that, and I'm very happy that you are diligent about protecting our resources and sites, cultural sites. So mahalo again, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. David. See no other discussion? Members all in favor of approving Bill 91, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill 92.
Bill 92 amends Section 25-8-2, North and South Kona District Zone Map, Article 8, Chapter 25, Zoning Code, with the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition, by changing the district classification from agricultural 20 acres, A-28, to agricultural 7 acres, A-7A, at Kohona, North Kona, Hawaii, covered by tax map key 7-3-026003, applicant Jean A. Laurent Trust, area 21.095 acres. The Leaver Planning Commission forwards its favorable recommendation for this change of zone, which would allow the applicant to subdivide the property into two parcels. The applicant states that these lots are intended to be residential agricultural lots for the respective successors of the trust. Introduced by Mr. Iligan, first reading October 20.
Mr. Iligan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve Bill 92.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligan, seconded by Mr. Palaika. Any discussion, council members? Okay, hearing or seen none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill 93.
Bill 93 amends Section 25-8-33, City of Hilo Area Zone Map, Article 8, Chapter 25, Zoning Code, with the Hawaii County Code 1983, 2005 Edition, by changing the district classification from agricultural 20 acres, A-28, to family agricultural 3 acres, F A-3A, at Kohona Homestead, South Hilo, Hawaii, covered by tax map key 2-5-003024. Applicants marking Kim Rodriguez, area 25.003 acres. The Windward Planning Commission forwards its favorable recommendation for this change of zone, which should allow the applicant to subdivide the property into five parcels. The applicant stated they intend to retain two lots, convey the remaining three lots to their three children. Introduced by Mr. Iligan by request, first reading October 20.
Mr. Iligan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve Bill 93.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligan, seconded by Mr. Palaika. Any discussion? Hearing or seen none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Mr. Iligan, did you say Resolution 314?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, if we could, did you have anything else? I don't think so. Resolution 314.
Thank you. Resolution 314-15 transfers appropriates and appropriation out and from a designated fund account and credits same to a designated fund account to provide a grant to the Big Island Dairies Foundation to expand children vision screening services in Puna. Transfers $5,830 from the Clerk Council Services Contingency Relief Account, Council District 4, and credits to the Research and Development Hawaii County Resource Center account, introduced by Mr. Iligan.
Mr. Iligan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that, I just want to first of all thank the Dairies Club for providing... Oh, thank you. I jumped ahead.
Motion, please.
I'm sorry. That's my fault. I move to approve Resolution 314-15.
Do it.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligan and seconded via hand signal by Mr. Palaika. Mr. Iligan, go right in.
Thank you. I just want to quickly say my thanks to the Dairies Club for providing this service, the vision screening to the children in the Puna area. And I just want to thank them and also hopefully this financial assistance can go a long way.
Thank you, Mr. Iligan. Any other discussion, council members? Okay, hearing or seen none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Okay, we also have Jane here, so I think we can just get into Resolution 283.
Resolution 283-15 nominates enterprise zones for consideration and designation by the Governor of the State of Hawaii. Request the Governor designate four new enterprise zones in Hawaii County, which would provide tax incentives intended to foster economic development and generate employment. The proposed designation is delineating exhibits to resolution are Hamakua, Hilo, Puna, Kona, and Ka'ou. Introduced by Mr. Onishi. There is a pending motion made by Mr. Onishi, seconded by Mr. Palaika to adopt Resolution 283-15.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. There's a pending motion on the table, so I'm going to give it, Mr. Onishi, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe Jane, can you please come up?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and council members. I'm Jane Horike, Economic Development Specialist with Research and Development.
Okay. So do you have any other comments about that was said at the last meeting? Not the one that we postponed, but the one prior to that, they had committees, about like the 2%, what is that, on the 2% increase on their gross income?
Yes.
Or employing more staff or employees?
I don't have any more comments.
You don't?
The program is a state program and the conditions...
It's within the state.
Yes, of the program.
So the state legislature is the ones that passed the laws for this program, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then also, maybe Mr. Duff, Buff, or Duffy, Duff, maybe Brad, you can come up?
You can introduce yourself and who you represent.
My name is Brad Duff and I'm the General Manager for Big Island Dairy in O'Kala.
Okay, so did you get to see that meeting on the video?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and then so do you have any comments about that?
I guess the, the main thing I would like to do is just put in my support for this program. As we know, as industries try to come to Hawaii, the biggest problem is the startup. There's a learning curve when you want to open up a business in Hawaii. And programs like this kind of give you a crutch for those first few years that you need it. And, I mean, we're directly benefited by this program and we appreciate it being there and offered to us as a new industry here.
And so how long have you folks been in the program?
So three years.
Three years now. And so you folks are basing your requirements on the gross income or on hiring more employees?
We actually qualify on both sides.
Okay, and then Jane, have they been, or do you folks monitor them or does just the state monitors them?
Each company participating in the program does have to submit an end-of-the-year report and the state...
So an end report to you or to the state?
They report to the state.
Okay, so nothing goes to you?
No, right now it's online and virtually they can do it on paper. If I do receive their end-of-the-year report on paper, I do transfer it to the state.
Okay.
And so therefore it is transferred to the state and the state issues them a letter stating that they have met the conditions of the program or they have not met the conditions of the program.
And Mr. Buff, do they, or Duff, I'm sorry, do they, the state come and monitor your place or come and inspect your place?
In regards to just this program or in, in general?
Well, in general, I'm not, I'm in this program for this program.
In this program, there's not.
So like your employees, when you're hiring, does anybody come to monitor?
No.
Nobody comes, so like for, I think we had a discussion that you just had an audit?
Oh, yeah, as far as outside of the program for immigrations, you'll have Homeland Security, they come and they'll, they'll audit your books, they'll audit your employees, things like that. That happens and has happened.
Okay, and then you had one just recently or something?
Uh-huh. Last year, we actually had one.
Okay, and how often do they come?
On those, I think it's just as a need-to basis, if there's any, typically I think what, what draws flags is if any person commits crimes or anything like that and they come back to that person and they say, okay, how are you here? What's going on? Anything like that.
Okay, okay. You know, I'll, you, you have any other comments?
No.
Okay, I'll yield at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Ms. Point Dexter?
Yep. Okay, so Mr. Duff, you and I had a conversation, correct, on the phone?
Correct.
Yes. Because I watched the video and I sent you a clip of some of a colleague's concern of my statements, correct? We talked about that?
Correct.
Okay. So when I emailed you, because when I was going out of town, I said I wish, and you got that email saying, you know, I wish you would have contacted me if you had any concerns directly because we have gone through some situations in our community with the dairy and you have come to the community when I've asked you to, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, good. And so you sent me an email back saying that it wasn't you who made the contact, but my colleague made the contact and concerns that he brought up that myself and Council Member Margaret Willie had expressed that we, you were firing people just because they are locals and that we seek out to hire illegal aliens. So I just want to say publicly, we talked about that and that is, you, you watched the video and you understand that was not the point. The point I made to DBED was exactly what a testifier had stated today. The testifier said he questioned if enterprise zone program would benefit people who are not state citizens. And I think that was the same concern I had with DBED, Jane, if you remember, that how do we hold our businesses accountable? Who would benefit from this program, especially when we're looking at growing employment? So Mr. Duff, you assured me that 85% of the employees you have are U.S. citizens or the county, local residents of the county of Hawaii, and that we talked about that I-9 form and what your responsibilities are for the I-9 when hiring. And I agree, because I worked in HR, I know about the I-9 forms. And it's not really your duty to be checking on the, we talked about social security cards and that's what I was talking with DBED about during that last conversation. And so I think my thing, my next thing would be addressing it at the federal level on how do they secure those cards to make sure that when they're presenting for I-9 forms as required by the employer, that somehow it would be, like we did with the Hawaii driver's license and all, where we, now you go, they check the light and there's this special thing that you cannot have fake driver's license now anymore. So the whole point was, the biggest employer in my district in Hamakua, that is in the enterprise zone, Jane, is our O'Kala Dairy, correct?
Your microphone, Ms. Horike.
Okay. Or do we have the beef, beef people as well? Are they in the enterprise zone? Okay, so, but the dairy, I, I know that the beef people had just expanded. The dairy had expanded as well. So I did use you as an example and you, you heard the, the video. So do you have any concerns that, I mean, that you want to address to me or are we, are you okay?
I guess in my case, I, the main focus of this is this program. That's, that's where I want your attention to be. I want it to be in that. Apart from comments made about the dairy, I don't really want you guys to focus on that. You guys have a lot of stuff to worry about. That can be another issue another time. I don't, I don't...
Okay. So our conversation where we talked about, my main concern was making sure that the part, that the benefit for this program was when we grow employment to help our economy and our people and all. We're on the same page.
I think, yeah, I would, I would think everyone in this room is for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I yield at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Point Dexter. Ms. Willie.
Let me say, I'm not exactly on that same page, so I just want to make that clear. I don't like how this program was designed. I think it does, you know, it's based on census blocks. In other words, those who qualify based on census blocks. So if I hold up this map and you see a big yellow area that doesn't qualify, it's all of the agriculture area in my South Kohala. It's not based on what small farmers or what startup groups can come in. It's based on, the first criteria of eligibility is what's your, what's your zip code? If it's 96743 and you're Mu'Kau Dairy, you don't qualify, okay? So I, I don't like this. I feel that it's designed in a way that really is done for whatever sort of, those privileged to get in and designing it, it's not like designed for the small farmers or the startups. It's designed, number one, those block areas, and then two, who can come in? Who are the eligible? Certain ag products, genetically engineered products, agriculture, marine genetic engineering. In fact, it's the genetic engineered, if you have a genetically engineered product, you not only get an exemption from GE taxes on your gross proceeds, it's the one group that gets the benefit on retail proceeds. You know, you've got even upper-class privileged parties, the only ones in this whole group of eligible that have that additional tax break is if you say you're a GE operation. And here we have three counties saying that we don't want GE products. Okay, so what are the tax breaks you get here? You get seven years exemption from GE taxes, most everybody except GE products, on at least gross proceeds. 80% income tax abatement, the first year decreasing 70% the year after and going down by 10%. Income tax credit, 80% of your unemployment tax paid. And then the counties can do more, there may be more, I think we, our county just does it on where you're adding buildings. It's, so there, so we're giving all these breaks, what does that mean? Everybody else, Mr. Mu'Kau Farm over in my area and everybody else is making it up. There's not free money. Every time, as I'm looking at all the different tax issues, every time we give somebody an exemption, seven years exemption from GE tax, 80% of the tax, you know, it's not like, okay, we're going to give everybody, it's a startup, a benefit. So I know it's the state that designed it, we're the ones implementing it and, you know, I, I do, and you, and then you have who's privileged, who got on this list? Production of energy, GE product, genetically engineered products, you know, and I'm not, I look down the list of what companies are in it and there are a lot that are good, but at the same time, I also have to look at the farmers in my area that are startup, that are in our South Kohala Waimea area is a big, you know, a breadbasket agriculture, a lot of people trying to, that's where they work and none of them, nobody there in, you know, 96743, whatever other zip codes there are there, can qualify on this. I was not involved in the discussion on any immigration issues and I think that a statement that it sounded that was made, I don't know whether my Council Member Onishi made it or not, but I certainly made no statement having to do with the dairy in terms of immigration. So I just want to clarify that. I have used Big Island Dairy as an example of where it's getting a benefit, whereas the farmers in my area are not. So I did use that and I, and I still stand by it today. Again, it's not, we're trying to help people, but every time we're helping somebody, somebody else is paying for it. You know, it's not a free thing and just the way the program was designed, I don't like. Again, that's the state and second, I do want to say that Jane has helped and tried to address some of our concerns and we have eliminated some of the expansion areas and really all that we're doing today is we're just expanding the area. Originally, it was proposed to pretty much expand the entire island would be this enterprise zone, other than my South Kohala and some 10 blocks in Hilo or something like that would get it and which would... and which would have covered all of the conservation land, and that was wrong, and I think that we have made a lot of improvements there. So, I will yield at this point with my time, but I just, again, it's not a program that I'm, I'm a happy camper with, so I'll stop there.
Thank you, Ms. Willy. Before I come back to Mr. Onishi, Councilmembers on the first round, Mr. Chung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I certainly understand Ms. Willy's frustration, especially looking at that map of hers, but at the same time, as she pointed out, you know, this is a, a program that was developed by the state. And, you know, I have to admit, it's probably based on some flawed formula. But really, the county and Jane, you know, they're just using that formula, however flawed it may be, and coming up with these area designations. But what my, you know, my concern has consistently been relating to the effective, effectiveness of the program. I think I asked you some questions the last time. So, Jane, are you the designated authority of the enterprise zones for the county?
Your microphone is Horeke.
I am, I guess I am the designated county representative.
You know, I, I, you weren't here last week.
No, I wasn't.
Right, so I asked someone at your office whether they could get in touch with the people at the state level, because they're the, really the guys who should be the receptacle for all of these bits of information, and, you know, to see if they would be able to provide us some information. I haven't received anything yet, but cannot help. But, you know, I was looking over the county code now, Chapter thirty-one, this is the, the chapter relating to enterprise, our enterprise zone program, and it states here that under Section thirty-one dash four, subsection C, annually and within sixty days after the anniversary date of the zone designation by the governor, the mayor or the mayor's designated representative shall submit to the state a report evaluating the enterprise zone program's effectiveness upon the said enterprise zone. So, have we been providing those annual reports?
Okay, it's, because the end-of-year reports go directly to the state, and the state is in the process of changing systems. Also, in the past, the state did have a worker that was assigned to the enterprise zone program, and that person used to do an annual report from all the end-of-the-year reports. With the cutback of staffing that happened a number of years ago, that the person that is in charge of the CBED program does the enterprise zone, and they, they have had to cover the enterprise zone program, not having a worker per se.
That's with the state?
That's with the state. Now, now, okay, and knowing that the end-of-the-year reports are, they're trying to handle this by digitizing the information, and they're in the process of working on it. They have not been able to provide reports quickly as I requested.
So...
Like, they keep on telling me, we're working on this, we're working on this, as they're transitioning from paper to digital.
Right, I understand that, but, so the state has been designated by the mayor to be their representative?
No, in this, in the reporting section, as far as how much, in the past, when we did have a representative, we could say there was X amount of savings, and how many jobs were created, and what, what the cost per job was, and, and how many companies very quickly, and what was happening. However, without this person, it's very difficult to compile all this data.
Right, so did we ever file an annual report?
Basically, the state would file the annual report.
No, but...
That's how, that's how it was.
I know, but I'm just reading this, the language from the chapter.
I, I understand that, however...
I wanna read them again.
Okay, yes, I understand.
Annually?
Yes.
The mayor, I'm, I'm just kinda cutting out the...
I understand.
The mayor or the mayor's designated representative shall submit to the state a report. So, not, we're not getting something from the state, it's, we gotta send something to the state evaluating the enterprise zones.
Okay, we have not been doing that, yes, we have not been doing that, yes.
Okay, okay, so, can we maybe just, because I'm, I'm still gonna vote in favor of this, okay? And I'll, I'll tell you why. We still, when I look over this chapter, we have the power to rescind this thing. Yeah, so if things don't go right, you know, if Ms. Willy has further concerns, you know, we can revisit this. So, there's not, really no harm at this point, but I think it would behoove the county to really take a look at, you know, because we are giving up some real property tax revenue as well. It's not just, just the state tax benefits that are being derived by these businesses, but also the county is giving up something too, and we gotta make sure, as Ms. Willy said, this is an issue of subsidizing. That means if somebody's getting a benefit, some other people are paying for that thing. And just for the sake of fairness, we gotta make sure that we are achieving the goals that we seek to achieve. You know, there's a lot of things that don't sit right in my mind about this program, but, you know, I can't quite clearly articulate it, you know, quite frankly, but, you know, but thanks for all your hard work, and then really, if we could...
I will work with you.
Yeah, if we can maybe work on, on that, um, report, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chung, on the first round, still Councilmembers, Mr. Puleko?
And, you know, I would just like to reiterate, and thank you, Councilmember Chung, for bringing that up. If it's an obligation, you know, it's, it goes to accountability, and I would expect the county to, to have done that report on an annual basis. I mean, it, it gives us numbers to look at and see how, as to the efficacy of the program. Not only that, but it provides information to the beneficiaries of, oh, should they join or not get involved? And then it also gives a lot of weight to arguments that, hey, maybe we should expand, for Councilmember Willy's concern that, hey, maybe we should include other areas, and, but, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Mr. Puleko, anybody else? Okay, on Mr. Onishi, oh, sorry, Ms. Eoff, I saw you raising your hand. Go right ahead, Ms. Eoff. Did we lose Ms. Eoff? I hope not. Ms. Eoff, can you hear us? We can't hear you. It's voice activated, so if you turn it on and start talking, maybe? Nope, oh, boy. Are you okay, Ms. Eoff? No, I'm just kidding. We'll take a, we'll take a brief recess if we can, if that's okay, and then we can get Ms. Eoff back on, okay, brief recess.
And all of the other enterprise, eh, okay, there's two, I'm sorry. South Kona and North Kohala are the only two enterprise zones that are currently designated at this time. All of the other areas, their designation has expired, so, like, this morning, I got a email from someone that has been waiting for six months to participate, and they cannot participate because none of the other areas are designated. So, all we are doing today, and this is the counties in the process of designation and the enterprise zone, it is the councils that, that designate the area of the enterprise zone. So, yes, it is not that we're taking up all of the other things, but it is, it is the county's responsi, the county council's responsibility to designate the areas that they want to propose as an enterprise zone. The enterprise zone program is one of the few tools for economic development that is available. We talk about providing companies with incentives and various kinds of things, and this is, this is one of the few programs that can do this. Change, it is, it is for depressed areas, so unfortunately, lots in Waimea, it is our breadbasket. However, it also, Waimea, in the Waimea area, houses lots of our more affluent society. So therefore, because it is designated by Census Track, they get affected, the, the farms get affected because of the area's census numbers. But it is, yes, that is correct, yes, that, that it is just the designation of the areas, and the four areas that we are proposing.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, but I, I do think some of the comments made today are important also, that we consider, and possibly in the future, the state can look at refining this a little bit more, so it's more fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Eoff, are you, do you yield, Ms. Eoff? Okay, on Mr. Onishi.
So, Jane, listening to the discussion, is it possible that you folks can have proposals going in for this coming session? Change some of the flaws?
I can, I can bring it up to the state, but it is, it is the state that...
I understand that, but the thing is, I mean, if you work with like a legislator, and they could do an amendment to this program?
Yes, it could be done.
So, would, are in the, or like for you, in your position, willing to work forward in trying to correct some of these problems?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, remember, I can work with DBED, and, but it is DBED that needs to take it forward. I can, I ha, I can speak to some of our legislatures, but because it is a state program, it is very difficult to do it just from the county level.
Okay, you know what I'll do then, I'll have, you meet with one of the legislators for the Big Island, and you can explain to them some of, maybe...
Yes, that would be good.
Yeah, some of the, I guess, roadblocks that you see, or, or, what is that? Some of the, I guess, problems that, you know, you're hearing, or the frustrations of, you know, like that, that, what? Two percent, three percent, two percent, or hiring employees?
Okay.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi, Ms. Willy.
I just wanna follow up on what Mr. Chung was mentioning, and I'm not sure if you were here at the meeting, where he did ask the state representatives who we had by video conferencing, you know, what, what are the tax laws? So, when you and I were speaking, it's, well, they look at, well, here's this benefit, and this benefit, and this benefit, but it's, what is the benefit, and then what is the burden? It's, it's, you need to have that information. You know, we're really, you know, you look around, all the things that we need to fund, this is a big chunk of money, we're saying, we're giving this out, and other people have to make it up, everybody else who's not paying for that. So, I, I would like to see that information, and I do think that's right. One question, specific question I had on is leased employees. If someone doesn't hire someone directly, and they're doing it through a contractor, do they still get to take credit for that?
Currently, yes, they do, and leased employees, many times, especially in the agricultural area, what, what I, many times, that particular phrase, lots of agricultural businesses do not want to do payroll, and, and, you know, like, all of the, the benefits, so therefore, what they do is, they use agencies to, to hire their employees.
Right, and how, and how about in terms of full-time employment, do they have, are they forty hours? Are they getting health insurance, or are they keeping them? Do you qualify if you only hire them for twenty hours and don't have to pay health insurance?
At twenty hours, the requirement is for twenty hours, and our state laws, states...
Is twenty health insurance?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, and you no longer have to, in agriculture, actually add your additional employees each year? You can now do it, qualify based on gross income?
Right, and the purpose of that was, was for the smaller farms that felt it was...
Well, you know, again, I just wanna say, all of these things that's said about the little smaller farms is that, that's not, it's not set up, here's for the little farms. You can be Dow Chemical and be getting this. When, when I went and was looking at the original map, and I put my finger down, well, whose land here is on this enterprise zone? And we came up with, you know, Bishop Estate for, I don't know, hundreds of, you know, a thousand, a thou, you know, two thousand or whatever, ten thousand acres, you know, so it's not, again, that goes to how it is designed, and it's not based on who you are, it's based first on whether you live around people that have money, or rich, or you live where... Yeah, it isn't, and, you know, that isn't, anyway, I really feel that it's poorly done, and I don't think that you're really gonna have much luck getting in there, and I think that, that, to Ms. Eoff's question, was really, well, here we're just adding, you know, we're, well, let me say, we are, number one, we are recrediting these areas, that, requalifying areas, so, so those that are out of, that were already qualified and have been discontinued or lapsed, we can re, but we're also expanding the areas. So, in a sense, we're also saying, we support the program when we go and do this. I mean, to go in and say, then, we want these changes, where we're all going in, and not only are we re-establishing the areas that have, where there's a high population, we're now gonna expand it. You know, we're not really, I, I don't, I feel like we're saying we support the program as it is, so, I do wish that we had, you know, they had provided some of those numbers. This is how much we're losing. Every time we tell somebody we don't have money for a program, you know, we just had the prosecutor and all of the help and citizen, we don't have money for that. So, here we're, how many, hundreds of thousands or millions are we losing out here? And then how do we weigh that? Again, I'm not trying to put this on your head, Jane, I know you're a pawn in this system to a state program, so I do appreciate your working with us, so I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Willy, Ms. David.
Yes, mahalo on Ms. Horeke for, for what you've done for this program, and I just wanted to know, based on the discussion, is there anything that would, at this point, prevent you from satisfying the requirement of preparing that report that Mr. Chung referred to? And I think because of the discussion, there's, there's some valuable information, I think, that could be gleaned from a report that we could access, and maybe answer a lot of our questions beforehand. So, that was just, that's just my question, if whether you would be...
I will work with you, I will work with the council.
Okay, 'cause I think it's done, I don't have the code, code section in front of me, but I think Mr. Chung said an annual report shall be prepared, and, and if, if you're agreed to work on that, that's great, and I thank you for that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Ms. David, Mr. Chung, did you have anything?
I'm sorry.
Okay, any other discussion, Councilmembers? Okay, I think we've discussed this a lot, and I'm ready to move on with the vote. Okay, hearing or seeing none, no other discussion, all in favor of, I don't even know where, um... Resolution two-eight-three-dash-one-five, say aye. Any opposed?
Yes, opposed.
Uh, that is eight ayes and one no. Mr. Clerk? Okay, Ms. Willy was a no. Thank you, uh, thank you, Jane. And I also see Tiffany there, Tiffany, are you here for Bill one-one-one? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we do Bill one-one-one?
Bill one-eleven, amends ordinance number fifteen-dash-fifty-eight, as amended relating to public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July one, two thousand fifteen to June thirty, two thousand sixteen, as the Public Works Mass Transit Maintenance and Baseyard Facility County Project for two million dollars to the capital budget, funds for this project... Funds for this project should be provided from general obligation bonds, capital projects fund fund balance, and/or other sources, $2 million. Funds will be added to previously appropriated funds to cover higher-than-expected costs for the construction of the facility, introduced by Ms. Yoff, requires a two-thirds vote of the entire membership.
Uh, Ms. Yoff, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve Bill 111.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Yoff, and seconded by Ms. David. Karen, you can go right ahead, we, we have Tiffany Kai here, uh, just for your information. Any, uh, I'm going to give you the floor, if you, but if you don't want it, we can just open it up for council members over here for discussion.
You can open it up for discussion, and, and ask Ms. Kai to come forward in case there's questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Willie, did you have, did you want to, are you okay? Council members, any discussion, or, Ms. Kai, do you want to just give a brief? Or, I think the council members see what's happening here, but if you'd like to give just a brief, um, statement?
Um, good morning, Council Chair Member Kanuha and council members. Um, as you folks know, we've been pushing along and moving along with this project, so we're here today to kindly ask for your support and approval for the, um, additional $2 million to move forward with our mass transit agency base yard facility and, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, base yard maintenance facility. Initially, we came in and we requested, um, funds, $10 million for this project, of which 6 million was the county's portion. However, an additional 2 million is required to cover the construction costs of the project, which is higher than we expected. As mentioned before, this project is a vital component to the operations of the transit agency. The facility will provide an enhanced work environment designed specifically for transit-related activities and repairs, as well as improve the overall efficiency, productivity, and safety of our agency. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, Mr. Palaika.
Good morning, Tiffany.
Good morning.
How are you? In regards to the request for the additional 2 million, uh, can you give us a brief rundown on what, why the additional funding?
Um, it, I guess, the estimated cost by the county came in at 11, uh, excuse me, 8.7 million. However, the bid, the lowest bid came in at 11.2, um, for the construction itself, and that does not include the design. So we're, we're coming in here to request for the additional funds to move forward with the project.
Okay, so our, our projection was for 8 million?
8.7.
But the lowest bid that came in was 11?
Correct, and earlier this year, we did appropriate 10 million.
Okay.
So we're asking for the 2 million, um, and of course, you know, there's going to be extra funds in case there's any change orders to follow.
Okay. All righty, um, and, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but how many bids came in?
Seven.
Okay.
Yeah, seven bids.
All righty, I'll yield this time.
Thank you, Mr. Palaika. Council members, any other discussion? Ms. David?
Hi, Ms. Kai, I just have one question. I'm reading the, um, um, the request form. It says that this new facility will house five mechanics and 45 bus operators. What is the difference between what you have now as far as mechanics? I know, I know we've, we've been very deficient in, in mechanics for our transit system, so how much will this improve as far as the number of mechanics and, and bus operators from what we currently have right now?
Well, we're still going to remain, um, the same at five mechanics, and, you know, it's up to the contractor to provide, um, more bus operators, and that would depend on if we increase routes as well. Um, but this facility will allow, or, um, will be able to accommodate future growth of the transit agency.
I see, so these numbers are basically, um, status quo, what we have right now, but with room to expand?
Yes, correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. David. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Kai. Um, council members, I know it's not 12 yet, but, um, we're going to have to reconvene our committee meetings at 1, unless you wanted to get one more in before... Okay, we can go, resolution 287.
Resolution 287-15 authorizes director of finance during two negotiations for the acquisition of tax map key 9-5-012005, situated in District Kaua, also known as Kohoa Olohu, utilizing the Public Access Open Space and Natural Resources Preservation Fund. 13-acre Kohoa Olohu property is listed as a key priority for purchase in the 2014 Annual Report of the Public Access Open Space and Natural Resources Preservation Commission for its historical significance and cultural importance. Introduced by Ms. David, there's a pending motion made by Ms. David, seconded by Mr. Palaika to adopt resolution number 287-15.
Okay, there's a pending motion on the floor, uh, so I'll give it to, give the floor to Ms. David. Ms. David?
Mahalo, Chair. Uh, at this time, I would, um, like to make a motion to postpone this to the November 18th council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to postpone resolution 287-15, and seconded by Mr. Palaika. It's been motion by Ms. David, seconded by Mr. Palaika to postpone resolution 287-15 to the November...
18th.
To the November 18th.
Council meeting.
Council meeting. In Kona.
Yes.
Okay, um, it's been moved and seconded. Council members, any discussion on this motion? Yep, Mr. Chung?
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry. Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, council members, I think it's okay to take a recess right now, and, uh, we can recess the council meeting until the conclusion of the planning committee.
Sure, sure. I just want to make sure, like, the nominees, just by any chance, there's anybody there?
Sure. Uh, is there anybody in the outer sites that are here, and we could take up your nominations, or any other bills that we see? I don't see anybody now.
Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Willie, for... Okay, okay, so we will take a recess and co, and reconvene the council after the planning committee, um, but we will come back at 1 o'clock for the Public Works and Parks and Recreation Committee. Okay, thank you, we are now in recess. Okay, aloha, everybody, we are back out of recess for our council meeting. Mahalo for the patience, and, uh, Mr. Clerk, if we could, I'd like to go to Bill 106.
Bill 106, amendment 106, amendments, number 15-58, as amended relating to public improvements and financing thereof for the fiscal year July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016. Adds the High High Fire Station, Kauailani Station Replacement Project for $6 million to the capital budget. Funds for the project shall be provided from general obligation bonds, capital projects fund, fund balance, and other sources, $6 million. Funds will be used to replace the current facility, which will be negatively affected by Kauailani Street Road Improvements, introduced by Ms. Yoff, requires a two-thirds vote, first reading was on October 20.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Ms. Yoff?
Move to approve Bill 106.
It's been moved by Ms. Yoff, and seconded by Mr. Palaika. Um, is there any questions, or, uh, debate, council members? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eight ayes, and one excuse. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Yoff?
I have a note here that Finance Department had asked us to waive the five-day reconsideration rule 15.
Was that a motion?
Um, so it's okay, I'll make a motion to, um, waive the five-day holdover reconsideration period.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to suspend our rules, um, to waive the five-day reconsideration. Um, moved by Ms. Yoff, seconded by Ms. Poindexter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's eight ayes and one excuse. Okay, um, if it's all right with the council members, stop, start at the top of the agenda? Okay, Mr. Clerk, we can start at the top again, uh, resolution 310.
Resolution 310-15 authorizes Department of Parks Recreation to award funds to the Kailapa Community Association. A grant of $71,000 will be provided to the Kailapa Community Association to help with funding for a community park and playground, introduced by Ms. Yoff.
Ms. Yoff?
Move to approve.
I'm pretty sure that was a motion to approve resolution 310, uh, moved by Ms. Yoff, seconded by Mr. Palaika. Uh, is there any discussion, Ms. Yoff? Okay. Um, any other discussion, council members? Hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine ayes. Next item.
Resolution 315-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from a designated fund account, and credits same to a designated fund account for the use of special-duty officers during the 2015 Pohua Holiday Parade. Transfers $333 from Clerk Council Services contingency relief account, Council District 5, and credits to the Police Special Duty Other Current Expenses Account, introduced by Mr. Palaika.
Mr. Palaika?
Motion to approve resolution 315.
It's been moved by Mr. Palaika, seconded by Ms. David, go right ahead, Mr. Palaika.
Yeah, this is just a small, uh, contingency relief fund to help, um, hold our Pohua Holiday Parade, and I'm just, uh, requesting all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palaika. Any, Mr. Onishi?
Just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Chair. That, um, I got word, maybe the Hilo Christmas Parade might not happen. Yeah, so, just a note there. Hopefully, somebody in the public might step up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Um, any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Next item.
Resolution 316-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out from a designated fund account, and credits same to a designated fund account, provided a grant to Kahala Oma Keiki Preschool for their computer equipment, and a site visit to Richardson's Beach Park Ocean Center. Transfers $3,200 from Clerk Council Services contingency relief account, Council District 1, and credits to the Parks and Recreation Administration Other Current Expenses Account, introduced by Ms. Poindexter.
Uh, Ms. Poindexter?
Motion to approve resolution 316-15.
It's been moved by Ms. Poindexter, seconded by Mr. Palaika, go right ahead, Ms. Poindexter.
Yeah, just, I think it's self-explanatory, but I just wanted to say that the computer equipment will allow the kids to continue that education, because they're going to be following the Hokulea's world, worldwide voyage, and communicate with the crew via video stream, so that's why the equipment. So they're going to go to Richardson's, learn all about that, and then be able to, uh, communicate with the crew during, during the voyage, so, uh, ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poindexter. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Next item.
Resolution 317-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out from a designated fund account, and credits same to a designated fund account, provided a grant to the Big Island Resource Conservation and Development Council to assist with expenses related to the 2015 Hawaii Island Veterans Day Parade. Transfers $1,000 from Clerk Council Services contingency relief account, Council District 5, and credits to the Prosecuting Attorney Other Current Expenses Account, introduced by Mr. Palaika.
Uh, Mr. Palaika?
Motion to approve resolution 317.
Yep, it's been moved by Mr. Palaika, seconded by Ms. David, go right ahead, Mr. Palaika.
Yeah, this is just a companion resolution to try and help fund our Hawaii Island Veterans Day Parade, just asking for your support.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Next item.
Resolution 318-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out and from a designated fund account, and credits same to a designated fund account to assist with the mass transit agency with transporting West Hawaii Kupuna clients of Aluli Ke Incorporated for an all-day excursion. Transfers $800 from the Clerk Council Services contingency relief account, Council District 8, and credits to the mass transit agency Other Current Expenses Account. Funds will be used for a trip to Waimea and Kahala, introduced by Ms. Yoff.
Ms. Yoff?
I move to approve resolution 318.
It's been moved by Ms. Yoff, seconded by Mr. Palaika. Ms. Yoff?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just would ask everybody to support this. Of course, we want to give our Kupuna, um, meaningful, um, excursion and a day trip, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Yoff. Any other discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Uh, next item.
Resolution 319-15 transfers appropriates an appropriation out from a designated fund account, and credits same to a designated fund account, provided a grant to Hospice of Hilo to purchase laptops and software to improve patient care. Transfers $8,000 to the Clerk Council Services contingency relief account, Council District 2, and credits to the Research and Development Hawaii County Resource Center Account, introduced by Mr. Chung.
Mr. Chung? Yep, it's been moved by Mr. Chung, seconded by Ms. David. Um, Mr. Chung, go right ahead.
Thank you very briefly. I think all of you know, uh, you know, how good a program the Hospice of Hilo is, and all the services they provide to people in our community. Um, about a month ago, Mr. Iligon, myself, and Mr. Onishi had an opportunity to tour their new facility, and we got to learn actually more about their program. And, um, you know, I, I found out that one area where they're, they could use help was in their laptops, because this would really allow them to, uh, enhance their service capabilities to, you know, people who need their services. So, that's the back, backdrop, then. I hope I can get everybody's support.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Any other discussion, council members? Okay, hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Next item.
Resolution 322-15 authorizes the payment of funds of a later fiscal year and of more than one fiscal year for multi-year lease for one multifunction copy machine for the Department of Research and Development, authorizes the merit to enter into a five-year lease agreement for a multifunction copy machine for the Kona office at an approximate cost of $1,545 per year, introduced by Ms. Yoff.
Ms. Yoff?
Move to approve resolution 322.
It's been moved by Ms. Yoff, seconded by Mr. Palaika. Uh, any discussion, Ms. Yoff?
Uh, no, this is pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing or seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Okay, we've done 323 and 324. Bills for ordinances, first reading, Bill 100.
Bill 100, amendments, chapter 20, article 5, sections 20-50 and 20-52 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 edition, as amended relating to refuse. Amendments would allow for the transport of refuse from transfer stations to the non-designated landfill. If doing so would avoid penalty fees, help to meet minimum volumes to qualify for discounted fees, or if the designated landfill is under repair, introduced by Ms. Willie.
Ms. Willie?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Ms. Willie, and seconded by Mr. Palaika. Ms. Willie?
Yes, just to bring the, uh, public up to date, that the big picture here is that this would allow, um, the environmental management director to redirect, um, landfill trash, not compostables, not recyclables, over to the, uh, west side. I mean, in theory, it would allow the director to actually direct, um, trash from any transfer stations to either of the landfills. And the key here really is, in terms of efficiency, right now, we're at about 300 tons of, of, um, trash that's being landfilled. I mean, right now, we're at about 290 tons of trash a day, um, each day, and if we were at the 300 mark, the rates would go down, just based on the contract that we have with waste management. Uh, we would save about, um, a... would save about, um, around $60,000. Um, the cost to do this would be about $5,000, um, which actually even that cost would be offset because right now, we're having to move some of the mulch that we have on the west side over to the east side, um, where it is needed, and also to avoid EPA fines. So, this is really just one part of a picture of being more efficient, and, uh, it does, uh, promote, um, sorting and zero-waste implementation. And we will have an additional, um, somewhere between $50,000 and $70,000 a month that we can use, for example, on our compost program, which, um, as we know, most all contracts are right now higher than what we expected, and I expect that'll cost a little more. So, um, the one change here is, I would like to, um, move to amend Bill 100 with the contents of Communication Number 493.1.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Willie and seconded by Mr. Onishi to amend Bill 100 with the contents of Communication 493.1. Ms. Willie?
And this is to address a clarification that, um, uh, Director Lighthard Todd asked about, and that is to make clear that biodegradable plastics would be considered compostables and not, um, otherwise. So, it basically is a clarification of the, um, amendment. I did look into this, and I did researched it, um, just in terms of what, you know, biodegradable means. And if biodegradable, for example, if that's landfill trash, it goes into the landfill, it basically, what it's doing there is creating methane. If it is put into compost and high heat compost, like what we, as a very advanced county, are going to be doing our compost program, one of only so many in the country, um, this will actually, it will be, um, it is all compostable, and then can be used as part of, uh, being returned to the soil and used for a soil amendment. So, basically, I'm clarifying this point in terms of a definition. It's not changing anything substantive in the bill, and I ask for your approval of this, um, amendment clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Uh, on the amendment. Okay, hearing or seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, Ms., sorry, before, Ms. Eoff, did you have a question on the amendment? I'm sorry, never.
Um, no, I'm, um, glad she's doing this clarification.
Okay, thank you. Um, one more time, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Now on to the main motion as amended. Ms. Willie?
Um, okay, we have, um, discussed this quite a bit, so I don't really want to prolong the discussion. I stated what the, um, you know, the big picture is here. If anybody has any, um, questions, um, I'm here. I saw a yield.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Onishi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention that I was on the council when we did pass that resolution, or, is it a reso, or was it a bill? A bill, yeah. And, you know, part of the arguments, which was your, uh, past, um, council member in your district, and also in the Hamakua District, was that the, they didn't want these trucks going through the district because their constituents was mentioning that, you know, they didn't like it, these big trucks going through the town of Waimea, going along Hamakua. And so that's why they put this in, but not thinking like we, because we had brought up about the costs, right? And so, and if you look at that solid waste plan, it says the, one of the cheapest way of disposing all our trash is to truck it over to Puana Hulu, right? But I'm very happy that, you know, Ms. Willie is doing this because it does make sense. And then like, you're saying, we're going to be saving money because, as, um, Ms. Lighthard Todd had mentioned before, that, um, you know, I guess you have to put about eight feet of soft, um, materials in order for, um, I guess, heavy things don't puncture the, the, the lining, right? And so, it takes longer because now they're only using basically on the west side. So it takes like double the time to get it. So then, that's when the cost rises again. So, you know, I want to really thank you for doing this because then, I mean, we looked at trying to do it, but then, um, nobody really wanted to pull the trigger, and you did. So thank you very much, Ms. Willie.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi and Mr. Chung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, I echo Mr. Onishi's sentiments, and I think it was appropriate that Ms. Willie, you know, it could either have been her or Ms. Poindexter to have pulled the trigger because it, you know, it would have been their districts that would have been, you know, immediately affected by this sort of measure. But now, you know, there's the possibility that it may affect my district, right? Because if they're going to use the saddle road. And that's been one of the real big problems, you know, with trucks going, um, past the residences there. But I'll tell you right now, first of all, I believe that this ordinance, number 12-92, which, you know, started this whole thing, you know, um, you know, way back, this is what Mr. Onishi was relating to, um, uh, passed in, I think, what, 2012? Yeah, um, and it, it kind of precluded the trucking of, of refuse from Hilo or other parts of the island to Puana Hulu, which would actually be the most sensible solution to our trash problem. We all know that. Um, but because of some unhealthy kind of resistance on the part of some to have, you know, maybe two trucks pass their, their areas, um, a day at most, you know, we, we come up with this, and we've been kind of hamstrung all of these years. So I really, really want to take my hat off to Ms. Willie. And, you know, because I'm going to be impacted, you know, that, that's fine. My district, I'll have to, you know, take the heat from maybe some residents, but for the greater good, and that's what we're all here for, right? For the greater good, I, I think this is a real sensible solution. So thank you very much, Ms. Willie.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Um, Ms. Eoff, uh, any discussion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep, um, of course, we have heard from a few concerned, um, constituents. And I just explained to them that this wasn't undoing all of the previous ordinance that, um, Mr. Onishi and Mr. Chung are referring to. There are criteria that would need to be met before, um, the trash would be taken from, um, one landfill to the other. So I just, uh, wondered if Ms. Willie, um, had any estimates, though, because, uh, someone was here earlier from the resort industry. They just were wondering about if we knew how many truckloads it would mean, um, per day, per week, or if there was any guess on that. I, I couldn't really answer the question.
Uh, was that a question directed to Ms. Willie?
Yeah, yeah, if she has that information. If not, I think we can get it later. But I'm, I'm going to support this. I, I think it makes, it's reasonable.
Ms. Willie, I'll give you the floor just to answer that question.
Um, yes, I did, um, attend the Environmental Management Commission meeting, and we discussed these points. And, um, they did work up a cost analysis of what it would cost to do this, and, um, based on what their anticipated truckage would be, and it would be about $5,000, uh, a month, um, what the cost. That would be set off by, um, our, because we'd get a reduction in rates, by $60,000, plus we would be saving money because we have to truck, um, mulch over. So, it really doesn't amount to, uh, that much of a cost. And your second question about what is the routes, is, uh, it would, it, it's not limited to saddle road or, um, highway, um, but it would probably be more often the saddle road. And when saddle road is completed, um, it would also be continuing down that way rather than down across Waikoloa. At this point, they're estimating it would only be about two trucks, additional trucks a day. In other words, you wouldn't really be noticeable. And I, I do just, if I could just clarify, I think that's, um, differentiated from what would have happened, what they anticipated in 2011, when they were not working on an aggressive, um, zero-waste plan like what we're doing. It was just, let's just take everything and load it over. It wouldn't, it would have been way more than two trucks. So, I, I, you know, there were concerns. Back then, it was just, do we do an incinerator or build a new landfill? You know, that was it, or, or truck everything. So I think that this is really fits into a very comprehensive plan. Um, it is not include, we're not trying to bring over the methane, the green waste. This excludes that. This promotes sorting. So, um, to your answer, it's going to primarily be saddle road, but it's not limited. There may be some times when it's, um, going one, you know, a different route. Um, and I see it as quite a, a minimal cost. I know I've met with and talked to the representatives from the Resort Association, as well as numerous members of my constituency, just to clarify these points and, and explain the, the big picture. And again, I think that what, uh, Mr. Chung and Mr. Onishi talked about, you know, we have to look at the big picture, and we can really look at all the programs we can use. This is over a million dollars that we're saving that we can use, and I, I really think it would be, um, you know, just a, a real error on our part not, not to do this. And also pull together, you know, I think back then, there was a lot of politics going on, and we're trying to do what's in the, um, best interest of our, um, communities and not just get into, you know, NIMBY politics and, um, you know, looking out just for our own areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Onishi?
I just wanted to also mention that, you know, during that time when we had, um, that bill in front of us, um, there wasn't really too many testifiers that was, you know, mentioning about in support of what they were doing. So it wasn't, you know, like, uh, I, I, I can't even remember how many had. I mean, it was like maybe less than 10 people, or even less than five people came out. Yeah, so it wasn't like what was said. But then, you know, to me, for the resorts, I mean, I, I can see what they're saying, but if you look at the traffic on Queen Ke, I mean, you have from Kauai going into Kona, these, all these rigs passing them, so I don't understand, you know, what is the difference. But this is great, yeah. But thank you, Ms. Willie.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Any other discussion, council members?
I want to, just, rule, I don't know where I'm supposed to ask this. Um, and maybe we vote on the, in terms of the, um, that we not need to move this forward to the next meeting. Can we do the final vote? Um, in other words, this is a...
Well, this is first reading.
Okay, this is first reading. Okay, so we're good on that. Okay, that's what I wanted clarified.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willie. Um, any other discussion on Bill 100 as amended? Okay, hearing or seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine ayes. Motion passes. Okay, Bill, now we're on to, we did Bill 111, 112. We'll go to the order of the day, second or final reading, Bill 37, Draft 5.
Bill 37, Draft 5, amends Chapter 2, Article 15 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 Edition as amended relating to the Code of Ethics. Amends 1, definitions, revises definition for agency and adds definition for immediate family. 2, fair treatment, amends provision for use of account property to include campaign purposes, and adds provision to allow county officer or employee or business where an immediate family member of a county officer or employee has a controlling interest of said business to enter into a contract with the county agency, provided disclosure and approval provisions have been satisfied. 3, conflicts of interest, revises provisions for the ability of county officers and employees to represent private interests in legal actions, proceedings against the county or appear on behalf of private interests before any agency of the county. And 4, contracts, amends provision to allow the county to enter into contracts with officers or employees of the county or any business where an immediate family member of an officer or employee has a controlling interest, provided disclosure and approval provisions have been satisfied. Introduced by Ms. Willie, first reading, October 20.
Ms. Willie?
So moved.
That was a motion to approve, uh, Bill 37, Draft 5, and seconded by Mr. Onishi. Ms. Willie, go right in.
Okay, well, we've worked on this. This started out long before my time, and, um, I think we've moved and made many corrections and additions. And, um, right now, I feel that if anyone has other suggestions, they should do it in their own bill. And I'm, I know that we can always, I mean, I do believe ethics is critical, and I appreciated all the testimony here today. Um, and we, I feel that this is an important step. There are actually numerous provisions in this that, what we're doing here, and not just the one that we've sort of focused on, um, in terms of the potential conflict of interest between employee and a, um, contractor. And I want to reiterate that I do feel that the changes we've made, I did it not to cave in and listen, but I actually feel that this is a better bill, and that by having more transparency, we will see, um, if there are issues. And, uh, but provided, if there does, if this doesn't seem to be adequate to address the situation where you have someone who's an employee and they are a member of their immediate family is a contractor, then I will come back and, um, again, ask for the council to consider something more. But, um, I, again, what we're trying to do here on that provision is balance out our obligation towards promoting a higher level of ethics and at the same time being, um, fiscally responsible. That if we are able to, um, secure someone to do something, um, and, um, I think that, that person that came to testify was a good example, where they came in and they were, uh, a contractor and then became an employee, and their bids were, I think it's hundreds of thousands of dollars difference. So, we, we need to balance those two different responsibilities. But in the end, if that we don't feel satisfied that this is sufficiently promoting a level of ethics that we want, and a high level of ethics, then I think that we will revisit this. Um, I did add the change that, um, Representative Onishi asked, which, um, that amendment, just to clarify, that once someone comes in, that they're able to, that they don't have to keep coming in, um, every time they have a contract, if there is any change. There's a lot of giggles going on here, so I'm going to yield at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Thank you, Mr. Onishi, can, can, uh...
Ms. Willie, you called me representative.
Representative, okay.
You kind of promoted me.
Okay, I didn't know what you were giggling from.
But that's okay. I appreciate that. No, I just wanted to echo what you said. You know, this is a great bill. You know, I, I, again, was there when this thing got brought up, you know, for many terms before, and we finally got to resolve it, well, part of it, right? So, and I know you're going to be coming up with more, but, you know, this is great. And, um, I guess, we made a very great bill. Instead of having something where, you know, we rush it through, and then later on, you're going to have to amend the bill or something comes up, right, that you didn't foresee. But this was really thought out, you know, with everyone's, you know, um, suggestions and their comments. But thank you. I just wanted to kind of make one, or want, mention one thing about, you know, we had testifiers this morning, and, you know, the issue that they had brought up, it wasn't to be concerning about this ethics, this Bill 37. I think their, um, I guess, concerns needs to go to the state level, I mean, to what I'm hearing. And so, I'm hoping that, you know, they, you know, will move forward, but not, you know, relying on this Bill 37 to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onishi. Uh, council members, any other discussion on this? Seeing none from Ms. Eoff either. Okay, we can move on with the vote. All in favor, uh, Bill 37, Draft 5, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. That's done. Okay. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Bill 94, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 5 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 Edition as amended relating to parking, adds portion of Kalava Street to Schedule 28, no parking at any time, subsection F. Kona. Introduced by Ms. Poindexter, first reading, October 20.
Ms. Poindexter.
Motion to approve Bill 94.
It's been moved by Ms. Poindexter, seconded by Mr. Paleka. Is there any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Next item.
Bill 95, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 1 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 Edition as amended relating to speed limits. Amends provision in Schedule 5, 35 mile power limit, and adds provision in Schedule 3, 25 mile power limit, both proportions of Kawalani Street, subsection C, South Hilo, to relocate a 35 mile power speed limit sign to allow for a future driveway. Introduced by Ms. Poindexter, first reading, October 20.
Ms. Poindexter.
Motion to approve Bill 95.
It's been moved by Ms. Poindexter, seconded by Mr. Paleka. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, motion passes. Next item.
Bill 103, amends Ordinance Number 15-57 as amended, the operating budget for the county of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, increases revenues in the federal grant State Homeland Security Program Fiscal Year FY 2015 account, $360,000, and appropriates the same to the State Homeland Security Program Fiscal Year 2015 account. the same to the State Homeland Security Program Fiscal Year 2015 account. Funds will be used with existing funds towards the purchase of specialized equipment to enhance the capability of state and county agencies to prevent and respond to incidents of terrorism and other hazards, introduced by Ms. Eoff. First reading, October 20.
Ms. Eoff?
Move to approve Bill 103.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Is there any discussion?
Yep.
Mr. Palaika.
Yeah, I was kind of curious, you know, because of the testimony we had earlier, what are we actually purchasing? What types of equipment with the $360,000? Is there a department representative?
We had during the committee hearings, Chief Olivera here. He's not here at council today.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Ms. Eoff?
I remember we did have him discuss this a little bit. And to me, I think he did mention that it wasn't just for incidents of terrorism, but it also supports all hazards and catastrophic preparedness initiatives. I don't know what specific equipment, but it's not just limited to homeland security terrorism type of needs.
Is anyone aware of what we're buying or purchasing?
I don't recall what Chief Olivera said the last time, so I can't.
I know we did answer those questions last time, whether we remember exactly what it is.
We did remember.
Addressed that.
I just remember it's a, it's a grant and it's specialized equipment.
I'm just trying to call, recall the equipment if it was mentioned when Darrell, when Director Olivera came up. I just can't recall a fan. That's why I'm kind of concerned. And I wanted to address that testimony we had earlier.
Do you want to, I don't know, we could lay it on the table. I could make a couple phone calls. See if we can ask him.
We could table this if you want to. Do you want to make a motion?
Can I move that we at least postpone?
Table.
Table it for now.
Okay, it's been moved to table. Bill Number 103, until we can, to the end of this agenda, until we can contact civil defense. And it's been seconded by Ms. Willie. All in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes. Motion passes. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we go to Bill 104?
Bill 104, amends Ordinance Number 15-57 as amended, the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, appropriates revenues in the fund balance from previous year designated account $6.64 and appropriates the same to the Kohala Ranch Project 4 account. The funds will be maintained separately and expended in accordance with the requirements of their respective housing agreements, introduced by Ms. Eoff. First reading, October 20.
Ms. Eoff?
Move to approve Bill 104.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion, council members? Okay. Hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That is nine ayes. Motion passes. Bill 105.
Bill 105, amends Ordinance Number 15-57 as amended, the operating budget for the County of Hawaii for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, increases revenues in the federal grants Department of Health, DOH Complete Streets Federal Grant Account $35,000 and appropriates the same to the DOH Complete Streets Federal Grant Account. Funds will be used with existing funds to allow staff within the planning department to attend Complete Streets training, introduced by Ms. Eoff. First reading, October 20.
Ms. Eoff?
I'll move to approve Bill 105.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff, seconded by Mr. Palaika. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes. Motion passes. Bill 107.
Bill 107, amends Chapter 24, Article 10, Division 5 of the Hawaii County Code, 1983, 2005 Edition as amended relating to parking, adds portions of Manini Beach Road, Kaholoa Street, and Kaholoa Road to Section 24-280, Schedule 28, no parking at any time, subsection F. Kona, to address a concern that cars are parking in this heavily used beach area and places too narrow for parking, introduced by Ms. Poindexter. First reading, October 20.
Ms. Poindexter?
Motion to approve Bill 107.
It's been moved by Ms. Poindexter, seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion? Hearing or seen none. All in favor, oh, sorry, Ms. David.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask my council members for support on this. This effort basically finalizes the events in establishing the no parking in an area where there were some safety concerns that our ambulances would not be able to access the beach area. And it was a collaborative effort by the administration, myself, and the community. And the no parking signs were erected and this basically finalizes the move that was made. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. David. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Nine ayes. Motion passes. Next item.
PC 31, Communication 512, nomination of Kristen L. Dirks Asam to the North Kohala Community Development Plan Action Committee.
May I have a motion to close, to close file? We'll just say, move to approve the nomination of Kristen Dirks Asam to the Kohala, North Kohala CDP.
Motion to approve the nomination of Kristen Dirks to the North Kohala CDP.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Motion by Ms. Willie, seconded by Mr. Palaika. Ms. Willie, any discussion?
No, just glad to finally have some members and hopefully we'll have some meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes. Motion passes. Next item.
PC 32, Communication 512, nomination of Richard L. Elliott to the North Kohala Community Development Plan Action Committee.
We have a motion to file Communication 512 and approve the nomination of Richard L. Elliott to the North Kohala CDP Action Committee.
Motion to approve the nomination of Richard Elliott.
It's been moved by Ms. Willie, seconded by Mr. Palaika. Any discussion? Ms. Willie?
You know.
Thank you.
Again, I'm glad that we're getting these vacancies that have been long overdue and hopefully we'll have some meetings here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing or seen none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That's nine ayes. Motion passes. Okay, there is somebody on their way from civil defense, but if they're not here, maybe we can just go into executive session? Okay, or you guys want to wait a few minutes? Executive session, okay. Civil Defense is right here, right? Right across the street? Okay, yeah, we'll do executive session then. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Normally, we would read in the item.
I apologize.
There's two items. I, I suppose, I don't want to presume that a motion to go into executive session would apply for two things. So I don't know if you want to just read one in, make a motion to go in, deal with that. It's not, it's more time consuming as opposed to, like I said.
We can do them separately if that's the position, if Corp. Counsel is okay with that.
Could we do the second one first? Because I'm not sure we need to go into executive session on the second one.
Sure. Mr. Clerk, can you just read in Communication 528?
Communication 528, requests to authorize the hiring of Leon Konohiro Benton and Brook as special counsel for Department of Human Resources Health and Safety Division Workers' Compensation Branch from Corporation Counsel Molly Esteban, dated October 14, 2015, requesting an attorney-client confidential discussion to consult with the council the hiring of special counsel, including pricing information.
Ms. Willie, may I have a motion?
Yeah, I would like to start here without.
Make a motion first and then we can discuss.
Make a motion to approve Communication 528.
Then the motion, just to be clear, is to authorize the hiring of special counsel, which requires a two-thirds vote of the council.
Okay, the motion, well, just restate the motion. The motion will be to authorize Corp. Counsel.
The hiring of special counsel.
To hire special counsel. And it's been, it's been moved by Ms. Willie and seconded by, who seconded? Any second?
Fresh.
Mr. Onishi. Okay, Ms. Willie, go right ahead.
Yeah, so can, you know, if there's something that you feel needs to go into executive session, but otherwise, I see this as, can we just explain it here to the extent that you feel comfortable?
Sure. Good afternoon, Chair Kanuha, members of the Hawaii County Council, Molly Esteban's Corporation Counsel. We, for the past several years, had an attorney working for us who handled our workers' compensation matters. And she unexpectedly passed away a few weeks ago. So we thought about our options for handling workers' compensation cases, which is a highly specialized area of the law. Prior to having Nora Pinau as a county employee, we contracted out for these services. And that's what we'd like to go back to at this point. Hiring somebody with the necessary experience, bringing them in-house doesn't seem like a likely possibility at the moment, at least not bringing someone on board as quickly as we need somebody. So we're looking to hire outside counsel to handle this.
Okay, let me just say off the top of my head, I don't like this idea. If it was just temporary, I wouldn't have so much of a problem. But I don't like the idea of where we're, we're basically handing this out for private attorneys to do. I don't consider workers' comp that difficult. It's, I think it's perhaps one of the, anyway, I'm not, won't go into that. But I don't see this as a complex area of law that somehow is more difficult than the other areas that you all are handling. And I think that we have vacancies in your department. Why aren't we, why aren't we filling those? And I do want to refer to, there was testimony, it's maybe a month or two ago, someone came here and I don't recall what it had to do with, I think it was somebody who's in, Councilmember Chung's, and talking about his, he talked about his experience and working with that contract attorney. And it was with the police force. He was, it was a case. And just how difficult it was. And the contract attorney said, well, I can't authorize an extension here. I'd have to get back to, you know, Police Department, Mayor Canoy, and on and on. And it was like just a total, I don't feel, the workers' comp is where people, our people, us, are hurt and need help. And, you know, we're farming it out. So I understand that this person has died. And if somehow you needed to hire somebody quickly to fill in, I think you said there's 79 cases. But I don't like the idea of where we're, instead of our department, that it's a farmed out. And I, in particular, don't like it where it's employees who are hurt that are the ones on the outside. So I'll yield, those are, if you want to respond, anyway, you understand my concerns and I see this as one option. But I don't, I don't like this option.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Mr. Palaika.
Hi, good, hi Molly, how are you?
Good.
I just got a question in regards to the amount we're looking at for workman's comp
The total amount of the contract we're asking for is $300,000.
How many employees could that get garner if we hired them under the county? If we pay an attorney like, say, $80,000 a year, we get two attorneys?
No, that's not, well, the $300,000 probably would, I mean, maybe Charmaine wants to come up here so she can speak historically. But maybe that would be, cover about two years.
Two years, so.
Approximately. I mean, I can't say for sure.
Okay. Hi Charmaine, how are you?
What you got? Okay, good. I'm fine, thank you. What's the question?
Okay, so we're looking at $300,000. That should cover about two years. So we're giving about $150,000 a year for attorney?
Possibly.
If you could just restate your name for the record.
My name is Charmaine Kamaka and I'm the Human Resource Manager for the Health and Safety Division. I based that number, I pulled that number, I looked back at what we spent for the firm of Pinau and Ono before she was a county deputy. And we spent up to close to $200,000 in one particular year. I don't foresee the hiring of a new attorney that specializes in work comp in the near future. The money doesn't lapse, it carries. So until such time that the county is able to secure an attorney that would be dedicated to doing workers' compensation, we need the specialty.
Okay, so when the case first comes in front of the Labor Department, the attorney's going to represent him from step one?
No.
That's what I'm.
No. These are complex cases that require the services of an attorney. A lot of them are at the appellate board level where you have to have the services of legal counsel. So, and it is a specialty. It really is. You can't dabble in work comp. If you do, we're going to be throwing away taxpayers' money. They're complex cases, controverted cases. They're not, I respect, you know, these are our employees and they're injured. But the claims that we're talking about that get referred to an attorney are very complex and litigated claims.
And do I still have the floor? Okay, okay. I understand a little bit about workman's comp. And I know, you know, I represented workman's comp cases.
I know, you know, I know.
Yeah. So that's why I just wanted the information to be out there for our constituents so they understand why the money and what the argument is in terms of hiring attorneys when it reaches the level where you're going to have a lot of medical information that has to be processed by the attorney and attorneys and medical doctors on both sides. That's the way it works. But I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the amount of 350 where I'm, Charmaine, did we ever have our own attorneys do the workman's comp cases before?
We had Nora, way in the past, we've, we had Corporation Counsel. And it came, over the years, we decided we need someone who specialized in work comp because the attorneys at Corp. Counsel were spread thin and it wasn't their specialty. And the best way, I explained it in the past to counsel is if you had cancer, you could go to a GP, but you'd be better off going to an oncologist. And that's the principle, basically. It's a special field. And so to ask the attorneys at Corp. Counsel who don't specialize in that field, although they try to represent us well, it's not their specialty. So along the way, well firstly, we decided to hire outside counsel and then we were fortunate enough to obtain the services of Nora as a county employee.
And I can understand that reasoning, but the law is pretty clear, the 386 workman's comp. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry on what's irritable. In terms of the decision, finding or arguing a decision, I can see trying to get the best attorney representation. But I'm okay with this. I'll allow, I'll use it this time. Thanks Charmaine.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Palaika. On the first round, any other discussion? Ms. David?
Aloha Charmaine and Molly. I'm looking at the list of open cases and I've noticed that there's some that are very old, like 92. And I was just wondering, I know cases can drag on, but are these, is this firm pretty much hired to complete all these pending cases as much as possible?
Yes.
So they will be, they will be charged in addressing these So, they will be, they will be charged in addressing these cases? So, as new cases come in, will you have your own staff to, to take them if they're not specialized cases?
If they need legal expertise, they'll be referred to that, that firm along with the claims on that list. The expectation is that many of those claims will be brought to closure.
That's what I was wondering, because if, if you're hiring a, um, a very specialized law firm, and the number of cases that I see on this list, some of them are very old, um, it would be great, and if that's the goal, and, and the, yeah, to close these cases, then, then I would definitely support this, um, just to get you folks some help, um, and back on your feet. Okay, mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. David. Ms. Willie.
Uh, how many vacancies are there right now in your department?
Including the position that Nora held? Three.
Three. And you, we've got a certain number of cases, but you're saying as more cases get added, it will continue? I mean, it seems like it, this, at first I thought, well, is this a temporary situation to get us through this backlog? Or are we switching and we wanna have outside counsel handle it? And it seems like it's really a decision to, it's not just a temporary arrangement.
No, at this point, the intent is to go back to having outside counsel provide this service, which is what we had for years and years. And, um, frankly, we had an opportunity to bring Nora in-house when she retired and closed her practice. And she worked for the county for maybe two, two years?
And why isn't that better? I, I mean, if, let's just say we can hire another attorney that specialized, that whatever it is, a hundred and twenty-five thou- whatever it is with benefits, a hundred fifty?
It's a thousand times better to have them on staff. The chance of that happening, it, it, we were very fortunate that Nora was retiring at the time she was retiring, they were closing their firm, and so we were very fortunate to have that happen. And if we had that opportunity again, that would be the best route to go.
It is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and why do, are we pursue that while we temporarily have, and do this outs- farming out temporarily? You just don't, I mean, there are attorneys that hard to come by?
Work comp attorneys are very hard to come by.
Really?
Very hard to come by.
Okay, um, okay, the only thing, again, I wanna just express my concern that in terms of talking to people who have been through the workers' comp with a co- one of the contract attorneys has been very unsettling and, um, always feeling that there, this person, there's all these extra links out there, um, and very, uh, you know, that they don't really have full control, they have to check back here with the county, um, and then people, those people contacting mayor or others. So, I, I think it's, it's just where you don't have someone, that, that the people that are most affected, who have just expressed concern here, including testifying before our counsel, um, has, it's made it much more difficult and not a sense of that there, you know, people that are a part of this, um, really with, within this, um, system or constellation. So, I just want you to be aware of that, um, my concern. I mean, you know, we could farm out every, you know, I mean, right now, we don't have a good, you know, the tax person, Craig is gone, we don't have Kathy Gertson, I'd love to, you know, let's, you know, people have gone, but, uh, you know, I really think that hiring where they're in and part of the, um, county employee is preferable. I do hear you saying that you've tried, um, and that it's not that easy. So, okay, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Willie, Mr. Chung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Charmaine or Molly, if you guys can just explain to me, what's gonna be the, the fee arrangement? I see three hundred thousand dollars over two years, right, you said, estimated?
Correct.
But?
It's an hourly fee.
If you do approve the contract, uh, approve us hiring special counsel and we enter into the contract, it's public record. But at this point, and that's why I asked to go into executive session, or one of the reasons, is the, um, pricing information in the law firm's proposals not public record at this time. So, we can go into executive session, I can discuss the fees, but...
And, and I have no problem with going into executive session for that purpose, but why wouldn't it be public if we were, you know, it's the public's money, right? I mean, maybe?
I just said, if you authorize us to enter into this contract, and we do so, then the contract is public record. At this point, we're seeking your authorization to do so.
I see.
Conceivably, you could say, "No," and then we back to square one.
Okay, okay. So, but it is on an hourly basis, though, yeah, whatever that thing may be?
Correct.
Okay. So, it's possible that it could go over three hundred thousand for one year?
Very possible, very possible.
Yeah.
Depending on the number of claims that are referred, depending on the complexity of the claims, absolutely.
So, it's not real necessary that we go into executive session to find out what those hour- that hourly fee is, right? We, we just gotta know in concept what we're, we're looking at. Um, you know, I, I share the same concerns that Ms. Willie brought up, but at the same time, I agree with, um, Charmaine. You know, I think there is a need for this, and I'm, I'm gonna be supporting it, but, um, you know, it's with the understanding that you guys possibly will try to get, you know, I mean, you stated, it's better to have someone in-house, right?
Absolutely.
Who specializes, but it's so difficult because Nora had all those years of experience, retired, and then agreed to come on board. I mean, ironically, you know, twenty-two years ago, I was the work comp attorney for the county, but doing it really part-time, and I was really, really dou- difficult. It's not an easy thing to do, learning on the job, and then handling all these other departments as well, and then, so I can see the need for it, no question about it, but, um, you know, I'm hoping that you guys will, you know, still keep an eye towards possibly getting someone who specializes, you know, um, within the department. But one thing that I, I have a concern about, you've got three vacancies, right? One of which was for the work comp person. So, now, we're gonna be spending possibly three hundred or more thousand a year for work comp, and now we've got, we still, we've got three open spots when actually it should be only two.
Correct, we're not seeking to fill the
Okay, all right, good.
Third vacancy.
Okay. And my last thing, it really has nothing to do with this specific matter, but tangentially related to special counsel. And it, I guess it could be tied into what Ms. Willie was talking about, you know, the, uh, the accessibility, accountability, uh, of these special counsel people. Now, I don't know if we have any report or reports regarding the people we retain as special counsel. I mean, are we given periodic reports on that?
Are you given reports?
Yeah, I mean, just to tell us who we have retained, I mean, there must be a number of people retained.
Well, there's actually not that many, um, we, I don't, no, to my knowledge, we do not send reports, we come initially when we seek your authorization to hire them. Um, and beyond that, there's not periodic reports.
I'm not asking for a periodic report, but maybe just so that we can get a point-in-time picture of where we're at with all of our special counsel, um, people. Could we get something just to see, you know, who we have, how much we, we've spent, what we possibly may be spending on them, you know, going forward? And just a brief synopsis of, of, you know, their cases. Don't take too much time, but I just wanna get a, a, a picture of where we're at on that, yeah?
Sure.
Okay, and then if you could just send it to Chairman Kanuha, and then we can discuss it on, on the council? Yeah, at the council. Thank you, Molly, thanks Charmaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Um, Mr. Puleka, did you have any more in the session?
Comment, if we're gonna go into executive session anyway. Um, you know, when I did look at the list of attorneys that were, that had cases pending against, that we had pending with the county, some of them are very familiar with some of the attorneys on the, the other side, uh, having worked with them in the past. And then one sits on the board now. But my, with that in mind also, what's our closure rate? You know, if a lot of these, how, what are the, the average age of these cases?
That, you know, there is no closure rate per se. Our, our, our mission is to make the person whole, and that's bring it to closure.
That's according to the, to the statute.
Correct. Some are very complex and take a long
I understand that Charmaine, but once they are, um, deemed ratable, and you can, you can reach a decision, so...
We close them.
Right, so...
The claims you see listed on those that are beater, those that are to be referred to special counsel are not those types of claims. They're not, okay, MMI and maximum medical improvement rated and ready for closure. They're litigious, litigous, depending on who you're speaking to.
Okay.
Complex claims.
Okay. So, none of them are ratable and
No.
Ready to?
No.
Have a, okay.
They're controverted.
Okay. Thank you Charmaine.
Mm-hmm.
It's good for people to know.
Thank you, Mr. Puleka. Um, I don't think there's any need for this one to go into executive session unless anybody has a dying wish to go and get some numbers, but, um, if any, if there's no more discussion, Ms. Eoff? Let me, let me just ask for Ms. Eoff real quickly. Ms. Eoff, are you okay?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chung.
We're gonna be locked into, um, like, two-year contract, or how, how is this thing gonna work? Can we?
In the past, it hasn't been structured, um, where they start and end date, just because of the nature of the work. I mean, we hire them to see claims through to their completion. Just basing off of what was done in the past, we, it looks like the office would come before the council to seek, um, authorizations to either extend or provide additional funding to the existing contract every couple of years. It, also, I think is a good idea, you know, once this contract expires, probably to do another, um, procurement, just to keep the process, you know, open and competitive.
And you guys will be keeping a tab on, you know, their, their bills, right?
Charmaine's office works very closely with
We watch, we, we watch the funding, and if the funding is running low, we come before you again and ask for additional funding. Comes from the general fund account, the general fund workers' compensation account, so it's not new monies.
Okay.
It's existing monies.
But, let's say it's getting out of hand, and hopefully it doesn't be, you know?
When you say out of hand, like expensive?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Can we cut it short, or do we have to let it run its course?
You can cut it short, you assign, you assign an attorney to the claim that may not be well versed in workers' comp.
Right, right, right.
I mean, that's, that's the alternative.
Well, how much were, were we spending in the past, per year?
For, before we hired Nora?
Mm-hmm.
I just happen to have that information. I just happen to have it. You want calendar year or fiscal year?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. This goes back to two thousand and eight, um, let's see, budget year, one thirty-six, five eighty-five. Budget year, two thousand and nine, one ninety-two, seven twenty-three. Budget year, two thousand and ten, one seventy-four, three seven five. Budget year, two thousand eleven, one seventy-five, three four five. Uh, budget year, two thousand and twelve, one ninety-seven, six oh five.
And that was the end, right?
And that was the end.
That's kinda reasonable. So, if we see an aberration now, like, let's say, four hundred fifty thousand for, or you guys come for approval, you know, for, then something's out of whack, right?
That's not likely, that's not likely, because you'd have to have ten attorneys, uh...
I, I can live with, with those amounts, I, I think those are fair.
They're reasonable, they're reasonable.
Okay, okay. Thanks Charmaine, I trust you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chung, uh, Mr. Puleka.
One more, I guess, this could be a suggestion. But, can we continue trying to seek, um, filling that position for a workman's comp individual? And while we're having these contracted, uh, attorneys, they can work together? I think it would help the attorney that we, if we do hire one, in the long term, it would be more feasible for us, especially if they, if we can keep them in a, that individual, long term.
While the position is there, right now, it's unfunded. You know, the, the position has to be in Corp Counsel. Uh, attorneys have to be housed at Corp Counsel organizationally. Um, right now, it's not funded.
It's not funded?
It's not funded.
Let's go fund it.
I mean, for obvious reasons, I, I don't foresee it getting filled between now and the end of next year. I don't foresee that.
I'm just looking at the long term, I mean, if we can
Right.
Get a handle on, on these cases instead of them, you know?
I would, I would think we'd have a better opportunity, probably at the top of two thousand and seventeen, to recruit a work comp attorney. Because it's an appointed position.
It's an appointed position?
My position is appointed by the mayor, and all the deputies are appointed, so, um, we're coterminous with the mayor's term.
But the Corporation Counsel position that you had mentioned is, that's a staff attorney? That's not an appointed position, is it?
The, the deputy who was handling workers' compensation? Yeah, she was housed within the Health and Safety Division, but she came under, organizationally, she came under Corp Counsel. She was a deputy Corporation Counsel.
Okay.
Ms. Willie?
You know, I have some problem with how old so many of these cases are. I mean, I know, you know, when I did some workers' comp, you know, it was, it, the employer, it's always how to keep it going longer and year after year after year, and you look at all these people and per se. You know, I, I, again, I know that we're trying to protect the county and save money, but at the same time, you know, we're, we need to look at it, us as a council, both sides, you know? And, um, you know, I was always felt up against the, it getting extended and year after year, and then finally, the person feels, "I don't have any choice, I have to settle for something that seems very unfair." Um, I, I don't, you know, I appreciate what Councilmember Puleka was saying, sort of what is the long-term view? Um, but I feel like we really are, we've got a, two paths, and once we go down this one, these are the people that are gonna get the education and be working on it and have those cases. It's not gonna be that easy, go hire, you know, somebody else. Um, I, you know, I don't, I, I, I'm not gonna support this. Um, I just really feel strongly it's a disservice, and I feel that we just have to make more of an effort to find somebody that can do these cases. We have vacancies and, and somehow fill it. At the same time, if it was, we want somebody who's a specialist to help the staff temporarily because someone's died and we gotta bridge it, I don't have any problem. But I don't see this as a bridge issue, I see this as a, a long-term direction and path, so, that's what I...
Thank you, Ms. Willie, um, Mr. Chung, I'm gonna give you the last, uh
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Opportunity.
Very briefly. You know, I agree with her, I agree with Mr. Puleka, and you know, perhaps Molly, and just as the administrator, you could kinda, you know, work towards grooming somebody, but that's really up to you, quite frankly. Uh, but I will mention, though, the reality of the situation, you know, there's a dearth of, of good workers' compensation attorneys in, in Hilo, anyway. And that's why claimants are not able to get, um, representation, so they have to go away 'cause there aren't any people here, 'cause it's, maybe it's not profitable, I, I don't know what, and it is very specialized. So, it's gonna be difficult, I think, to get someone, I mean, and it was really, really fortunate that Nora was willing to come on board. So, you know, that's just the reality of the situation. So, I know you guys are stuck, but if you guys can kinda just possibly, you know, maybe have one of your deputies go sit in at a, at an appeals board, you know, hearing with, with these guys, and...
We have one of our deputies who was assigned as Nora's backup. All of the attorneys, um, have backups assigned to cover. And he's been handling the, um, the workers' comp matters these, this past month or so. Frankly, if we had the, the manpower, I wouldn't be opposed to dedicating a staff person to workers' comp, but we have two vacancies we're trying to fill, that's difficult enough as it is, and we just don't have the staff right now to dedicate someone to this assignment, which is full-time.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right, and, and, you know, I wasn't suggesting that, I was just saying if you guys could kind of maybe let that person, whoever Nora's backup was, go accompany these Leong, Kunihiro, Benton, and, and Brooke, at some of those hearings, and maybe, you know, interface with them and just learn. And then you guys can start sending this person to more training possibly, and if it works out, it works out, if it doesn't, it... it works out, it works out, if it doesn't, it doesn't. But, you know, I'll, I'll support this, though.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Mr. Onishi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Molly, maybe you can contract Ms. Willie?
Conflict of interest, no. Okay, any other discussion, council members, before we move on? And I'll ask for the vote. Okay, again, the motion on the floor is to authorize the hiring of special counsel, right? That's what the motion is. Okay. All in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, that's one in opposition, Ms. Willie, eight ayes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a request to take a recess to express our support for the drug court program. We currently, they currently got BJA federal funds, there's two federal judges here, they're doing an audit of the 300,000 per year, and I was just wondering if we could take a recess, speak to them just for a little while, and then continue our counsel.
Yeah, if it's okay with you, we can take maybe five minutes to get rid, to not get rid of civil defense, but to hear civil different, hear the, if that's okay.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe a few minutes and we can go into that, and then we can take a recess. So if it's okay with you, I'd like to have a mo, can somebody make a motion to take bill number 103 from the table?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Iligan and seconded by Mr., Mr., Ms. David, to remove from the table bill 103. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's nine ayes, okay? Bill 103 is now on the table, I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Puleka. And we have Mr. Hanson here from civil defense.
Hey, Mr. Hanson, thanks for coming over. Yeah, we, I guess we just wanted to clear up a little bit on the type of equipment, based on we had a testimony, wanting to know or questioning what type of equipment. I know there's other expenditures, but if you could just explain a little bit to the amounts.
First, my name is Bill Hanson, I'm an administrative officer with Hawaii County Civil Defense. In regards to the type of equipment off of 10, bill 103, we're talking about $540,000 to be put towards generators under the Department of Water Supply. And this is in lieu of some of the damage that we sustained last year with ZEL, where we actually had to borrow, from what I understand, from Kauai County, some portable generators, some mobile generators, in order to support our facilities. This would make us more self-sustainable, self-sufficient, if we were to go ahead and procure equipment of our own. The other, there is another one, and that is, there's $200,000 for, so, so the total we're talking about is 760,000. 540 for the generators. Then there's 200,000 to address cybersecurity. Cybersecurity is one of the core capabilities that the federal government looks at amongst, I think there's 31 other core capabilities. So cybersecurity is not unique to our county, however, it's something that we need to protect. And the list of things that would be provided would be something that maybe IT would need to talk about, but those are, those are kind of details, but it's 200,000. Then there's another 20,000 that's on the books to take care of any type of citizens' core program support.
Certain dollars, good. So it's, and it has a lot to do, I guess, with reaching our compliance for future funding, goes toward the, the cyber part, right?
So we kind of apologize about the 400,000, and then all of a sudden we're coming back for 300,000, 360,000 more. What happens is, early in the, when we, when Hawaii County Civil Defense goes to state's civil defense, and before allocation of actual funds, we're kind of guestimating what they might be providing to us, because it's, the timing within the county and the timing within the federal government at that level, they're not exactly, you know, they coincide, therefore we're just kind of taking a stab at it. And we just hit, hit the mark a little bit lower, and it was kind of nice that they actually came in 360,000 more than what we had expected.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Puleka. Mr. Chung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, recently, well, maybe for the past 10 years, there's been this rise in the militarization of the police force, right? And it served as ample fodder for, you know, political satirists like John Oliver, and, but this is not the case. And actually, I don't mind that other thing, too, you know, the rise of the militarized police force, but this is really not anything close to that. So thank you for clearing all of that up, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chung. Any other discussion? Also, just mahalo for coming over here at a whim's notice, we really appreciate that. So, thank you. Okay, on the, on to the main motion, we're going to vote on this bill. All in favor of bill 103, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's nine ayes, motion passes.
Mahalo.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And now we will, sorry, Lorraine, we're going to just take a brief recess, brief recess. We're now coming out of recess, and we are moving on with business. I think we have one more item for referrals for executive session. Mr. Clerk, could you read in Communication 521?
Communication 521, Catherine Snyder's et al. versus County of Hawaii et al., civil number 10-1-0294. This case is appealed to the intermediate court of appeals, CAAAP-15-0000664, from Deputy Corporation Counsel, Section Chief Lorraine L. Martin, dated October 1, 2015, requesting an attorney-client confidential discussion to consult with the council of the above entitled matter, including settlement discussion.
Okay, may I have a, I think this one we might need to go into executive session. So, Ms. Eoff, can you send us into executive, or make a motion to go into executive session?
Sure, Mr. Chair, I move to convene an executive session regarding Communication 521 pursuant to Section 92-5A4, for the purpose of consulting with our attorneys on questions and issues pertaining to the council's powers, duties, privileges, immunities, and liabilities.
It's been moved by Ms. Eoff and seconded by Ms. Poindexter to go into executive session. Any discussion, council members, on the motion? Okay, hearing or seeing, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine ayes, motion passes. We are now in executive session. Okay, we are coming out of executive session, and we are currently on Communication 521. I think we can, I can ask for a motion to approve of the recommendations of Corporation Counsel in settling this case. I think that's the motion.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Poindexter and seconded by Ms. David. Any discussion, council members? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
On the motion to concur with the settlement, Mr. Chung? Ms. David?
Aye.
Ms. Eoff?
Aye.
Mr. Iligan?
Aye.
Mr. Onishi?
Aye.
Mr. Puleka?
Aye.
Ms. Poindexter?
Aye.
Ms. Willie?
Aye.
Chair Kanuha?
No.
Chair Kanuha, you have seven ayes.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, council members, we think we've gone through everything.
Slate is clear.
Slate is clear, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Puleka, seconded by Mr. Onishi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.